Welcome to the March 14th Planning Board Session for March 14th, 2014. We have a call to order.
I'm Sheila Lafaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity is absent. Secretary is here. Board Member Catalinato.
Present.
Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham is absent. We have a quorum.
Great. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Florinda, we have minutes?
Yes, February 8th and February 22nd.
Feb 8th and 22nd. We have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by George, second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed extensions? Five in favor, two absent.
So we are up to date with minutes.
Great. That's wonderful. Okay, so we're going to start with Claire. The Atlantic Hotel.
So this came in as our pre-submission conference at the last, the February 22nd meeting, oh, actually the February 8th meeting, and at the time of planning, was interested in a work session because it's pretty, yeah, extensive redevelopment of the property. It's a motel still, but with cottage-type campus style more appropriate, and then a restaurant and a spa on the property. So I have some preliminary plans for you that were submitted with the pre-submission, and then the applicant came in to help you answer some questions.
Okay, great. Can you identify yourself to the record?
Madam Chair, Aram Turcuni in First Coastal, West Hampton Beach, New York, on behalf of the applicant.
James N. Hume, Callie Hume, PC, 323 Mill Road, West Hampton Beach, on behalf of our.
Is that the new packet?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, now he's got a newer packet.
It's got everything in it.
It's got everything. Push them aside.
Well, the big plaids we'll still need, but this new packet will.
But these we don't. I'm gonna give these back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, so do you want to walk us through this?
Absolutely.
From the beginning?
So what we have here is a 64-unit hotel motel that contains also a pool and two tennis courts. It's on 4.5 acres. It fronts on North Highway, County Road 39, as well as Shrubland Road. This, these buildings were built in the early 70s, so they're, at this point, 50 years old. And what we're looking to do is to do a complete site redevelopment, not increasing the number of units and adding in some amenities, which will create a more holistic site. So if we flip to the next page, you can see our preliminary site plan. So in this plan, what we have is the entrance is not changing, but instead of right now where you come in, some photos I may share with you later, what the front of this looks like now, if you've ever driven by.
You can just hold it up.
Hold it. Okay. Well, so right now, you know, you drive in and you're met with massive buildings. It's early institutional 1970s architecture and, you know.
Are there 64 rooms in that lot?
64, yeah, and on the CO as well. So instead of that, what the applicant would like to do is to create this more holistic, where we have a circle, which is the receiving area, and a lobby adjacent to the lobby. That's Building 4 that you're looking at, and then Building 5 is a restaurant. And then the remaining structures are various types of bungalows. And actually, the building to the right of the restaurant are also bungalows, but more arranged in a dormitory style as opposed to individual units. So the, as I said, the entrance still comes in in the same location off County Road 39, so there's no change in the curb cuts. Shrubland Road entrance will be maintained, but now it's more for utility and emergency access. And you can see that we have provided emergency access around the entire circumference of the property. There's a sort of a loop road that goes around the entire property. Parking is provided in the southeast corner of the property, and there's a pool in the center. There's a large, in Area Number 4, the large green area is a great lawn to, for various endeavors. There's, around the pool, there's a pool building, which is right adjacent to that, Number 6. And then off, in the upper right corner, Number 8 is a tennis court. And then just below that, there's some rooms above it, but that's a spa below it. So the object here is to create more of a resort setting, where when people come, they stay, as opposed to now, when they come to get anything, including, you know, a soda, they have to get in their car and drive away. So here, with the amenities of a restaurant, which is a permitted use and for which we actually have a zoning board approval, the, and the spa, and the, and the pool, and the tennis court, this is much more conducive to people staying on campus, if you will, because they have everything they need right there.
I noticed that you've got some greenery fronting on Montauk Highway, but all of the parking, or the majority of it, is on the highways. So how visual is that going to be?
Well, that's going to be completely screened from the highway. We haven't developed our final landscape plan, but the object here is that, you know, when the, the guest experience is, when they enter, they come to, you know, a beautiful, you know, roundabout, and they discharge all of their things they're bringing with them and their persons, and then, and then the parking is off away and screened from, from the road, so nobody sees it.
It's valet?
It would be in some situations. I don't know that it's going to be valet all the time.
Because it looks like it's double parked in the two area.
So with the parking, yes, that's a good point. With the parking, we've provided the requisite parking spaces, but we also have overflow parking in case it's necessary, and if that were to be used, then it would be valet.
Okay. Because that, the question that Florina asked was going to be my first question, because we look at, we're looking at other properties on this corridor and really urge that the parking not be in the front, even if it's buffered, but that it be somewhere else on the property, because, you know, this is what we're trying to.
It appears strip mall-like, which we're trying to get away from.
Well, you know, the interesting thing here is we have two front yards. So we have, we have Shrubland on the north and County Road.
Is that considered a legal front?
I believe it is.
Yeah, they've got two front yards.
Two front yards.
And so this, this parking is most central to, you know, the area of activity, and by, by completely screening it with vegetation, it won't have that strip mall appearance. It'll, and if you drive by now, that whole area is, is well-vegetated. It's our intent to.
But really, it's your intention that, to make these buildings more appealing. You don't want to put them on the highway, so to speak. You want to put them in the back. So it's really a commercial decision, as I see it. And the parking remains the parking. I mean, and then just overall, it's a very crowded site. There's hardly room for your elbows. This circulatory road that goes around.
Those, those are not roads. Those look like walking.
Yeah, they're paths, but they'll be reinforced so they could, they could take vehicle traffic, but they're unintended. Yeah, they're not intended for everyday use by vehicles.
So just talk us around this circu, I thought you said there was a circulatory route all the way around.
Yeah, yes, there is. You can see the gray that goes all the way around, and.
With that, that blue hatch.
The blue hatch is, is the, is the emergency access. So although there would be a, you know, more like a pathway, the lawn on either side would be reinforced with like grass pave or something like that, so it could handle an emergency vehicle, but it would still be grass.
But you can't take your car. You must park your car here, and then somehow get your luggage to the other side if you're in one of the two or three cabins.
Right.
That's tricky business.
I heard you were in golf cart.
Yeah, well, you know, the, the thinking here is that there'll be, you know, lots of internal mobility in the form of whether it's a golf cart or your own push cart, so you can move things around. You don't have to kind of lug it on your back type of thing.
So just to go back over that, where you have the blue crosshatching, so you're thinking that would be something like an earth paver type?
Yes.
Not a paved asphalt?
Yeah, it would be, it would look like lawn, but act like a road.
Right, but not, not even, not a narrow, not a country lane.
Not a country lane, right.
Right, because as we discussed when you, you know, that cut-through traffic from Shrubland to 39's always been a real issue, so, okay, good. That's good.
And where do the emergency vehicles come in?
So the, emergency, obviously, from 39, but also Shrubland's will be improved so it can handle an emergency and utility traffic.
Withwise, yeah.
Right.
And crosswalks would be, have some sort, again, if you have earth paver-type things, I don't know quite how you'd handle that, but if all your parking's up here and they're walking to the restaurant, walking to the, you know, the rooms, I would think somehow you have to make sure they can walk safely, of course, and cross.
Where do we stand with, with public, public road, walking paths?
I'm sorry?
Don't we have paved pedestrian walking on the other side of Montauk Highway, White County Road 39?
You mean a sidewalk?
A sidewalk?
Sidewalk, yeah.
On both sides, I think.
It doesn't show here, so what is that?
Not on this side?
No.
So we're gone and it's been a sidewalk, yeah. I mean, as I say, it's certainly an improvement from what was, but it's a very, very crowded site with very little option here.
Well, first of all, you know, it is 4.5 acres, and if you look at the current site plan, which is, would be right there, I mean, this is, you know, a, you know, it was obviously built one building and then built another. There's very little planning went into.
Right, they have two, they have two buildings, a swimming pool and a tennis court.
Right.
You have, how many buildings?
Well, we have the same number of units.
How many buildings?
13.
13 buildings, a tennis, two tennis, one tennis court, two pools.
One pool.
What's the, what's this thing at the top of the green here?
Oh, that's like a water feature.
A water feature, okay.
And four is reception, just green lawn, right?
Green lawn.
Uh, yes, in the center, yes.
And three is a pool, and eight is a tennis court, and six? Outdoor living room.
Well, it's the deck around the pool.
Amenities for the swimming pool. So you have 13 buildings.
Is the restaurant, will be used for some sort of a catering type?
At the present time, no. It's strictly for guests. And we don't have any, the owner does not have a desire to do catering. The object is to create this world-class resort where people are going to come and want to be pampered.
But will people stay, I'm just trying to understand the business model, okay? I mean, they don't come for a weekend, they come for a week or two weeks? Is that part of the motel code? Is that permissible, long stays?
Under two weeks, and then it becomes something else?
Under two weeks.
Yeah, longer than two weeks is called a resort motel. In our code, obviously, this is a pre-existing motel, right?
As a motel motel, not a resort motel.
Right, there's a different, transient versus resort.
So is it your intention to have it be a resort motel?
No, our intention is that it would remain the same use it is now, which is a transient. We don't expect people to be spending more than, you know, two weeks seems like a long time to me.
I think resort in the sense that it's a more pampered experience than you would have now.
Well, I think by code, resort is anything beyond two weeks, and I don't know. What does, are there different requirements for that?
It's just that it's allowed in different areas more than others. Like RWB would be more of a resort motel allowing, rather than a motel zone, would be the transient motel.
So this is straight?
Which is like one night to two weeks.
Correct, exactly.
One night to two weeks.
Yeah, that's the difference in our zoning code.
They're using it more as a term of art rather than a zoning term when they say.
I know they are, but I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at the code language.
Sure.
To see if there are different restrictions.
And as far as, you know, the tightness of the site, right now, we're at nine and a half, almost 10% coverage. This only goes to 13, and this includes a restaurant building that's not currently on the site. So the, I haven't done the math, but the, the, the unit's square footprint is about the same as the footprint of the existing buildings. There are other features, other amenities that, that drive the delta, but.
Unit's getting bigger?
The units.
No, they're all one-bedroom units.
No, I mean, the size of the unit's getting bigger.
Square footage.
Are they now one-bedroom, and then there going to still be one-bedroom?
Yes, they're now one-bedroom, there will be one-bedroom.
Will the size of the units get bigger, that's the question.
I don't know the question to. In your packet, there are a breakdown of the different units. There's three different types.
Where are you, what page?
Oh, I should have numbered them. Well, so. It should be the fourth page.
Back to the future.
This one?
Go back a little. One more forward.
I need my really tiny glasses.
So there, there's a standard bungalow, large bungalow.
They'll just have one bed and.
Right. The, the object is, you know, the one is, the standard is quite small. The bungalow suite has a nice sitting area.
With a fold-out sofa?
I don't see one in there. And then the large bungalow, the bedroom's actually upstairs, and downstairs is like an office suite, as well as the sitting area.
So you're not going to have any additional sleeping, like a pull-out sofa, or you're not going to have that at all?
Nope. And you can see, these are all, you know, one, one bed per room, one bed per bedroom. And this is, you know, this is a complete change in aspect of what's there now. What's there now is, you know, that was the market in the 70s was, we need a place to stay for a couple of days, and we pull in and we rent a room. Clearly, the market here has changed, and people want to come, and they want to have a place where they can do some work while the kids are going to the beach and somebody's by the pool or playing tennis. And so that's, that's the market that we're serving.
So I see no, like, meeting room, no corporate-type, small corporate-type getaways. I mean, I don't see a meeting room or anything that would support that kind of thing.
No, and the, the object is, we want a restaurant on-site, so people can, can come and eat at the restaurant. And if they want to get room service, they don't have to drive to get it.
But the restaurant's not open to the public?
No.
Is it possible to merge that pool area and the tennis area, like, more towards the center? And then transfer some of that parking over on the, I guess it's the west side of the property? Over towards the south and the west?
It's a good, good idea.
Well, I'll tell you, to answer that, I'll ask you to flip to the second-to-last page. One of the things that is going on here is that a lot of this layout is being driven by some existing mature trees on the site. And so, and exactly in that area is an absolutely beautiful oak tree. And the object was to locate the spa in relation to that giant oak tree. And you can see there's also several other large trees around it. So a lot of what's driving the design here and the clustering and the parking is that we don't want to, we don't want to lose that.
Do you have that, do you have a photo of that?
The orange circles, a photo of the tree.
Of that area, yeah.
Yeah, if you go to the front page, you can see the cluster of trees between the tennis court, the pool, and the, and the easterly building.
You can see them up here on this bird's eye view, too.
Now, where's your AI system going?
In, in Area 4, that great lawn, everything's going under the great lawn.
Under the great lawn?
Yeah.
And it'll be very greenish.
You can see that layout on the third page. So we've actually broken this into a couple of different systems. Serving the majority of the bungalows will be under the great lawn. Then there will be another system that is clustered in the southwest corner, and then servicing the restaurant and the other rooms is a, well, a third and a fourth system. So actually, four different systems on the site.
And you're allowed for how much parking space?
64.
64 cars.
Yeah.
What about employee parking?
Yeah.
Where's the parking calculation?
62 and 2.
62 and 2.
Because you will have service vehicles, you're going to have laundry trucks, food trucks?
It appears that the code is one space per guest bedroom plus one per each two employees on-site at any given time. So if you have 62 units and four employees, that would require 64 spaces.
Yeah, the parking calculation is.
I think that might be under. I think the employees is going to be under. I don't know how you could operate 13 buildings, a pool, a restaurant with four employees. Just saying, you know.
We're listening.
Speculation.
I'm writing, I'm writing that down.
Just saying. We've had this before with.
Those 64 spaces, they are included landbanks, basically, behind, back of.
No, they're not included.
I don't see them then. Oh, okay.
Yes.
You have this, yeah, and then you landbanks, but that's a double park situation.
Right, that's a double park.
And I think the crosshatching in front of the restaurant should be removed, because that is asphalt park paving there.
Well, I think that designates the fire, but I'd point it out.
Confusing.
So there's certain lanes on the east and west side. Is that a paved pathway with, with, you know, grass pavers on either side of it to create the width needed for emergency vehicles?
That's, that's correct.
So there is a paved or concrete pathway that's X feet wide?
Right.
Which you could drive a car on. So you know how wide that, that's meant to be?
No, I don't.
Okay.
So it could be, it could be a proper walkway.
The path itself is not wide enough.
No, the path itself is probably going to be like four feet wide.
So it's a worldly walkway.
It's a walkway.
But you have grass pavers on either side of it, so you need to drive.
So the emergency vehicle.
Kick them around. Straddling the path.
Straddling the path, yeah.
And the pathway would have to be five feet. I think that's a, yeah.
I think you're right.
Is that a little landscaped median at the entrance? Is that kind of what you'd put in there?
Um, yes.
Or grassy, or?
Just, yeah, something, you know.
To divide the in and out.
The in and the out, exactly.
What are the rules on ADA parking? If you, obviously, none of these bungalows, most of them don't have access to a parking space.
So it's going to be, I'm pretty sure they have, going to have to design some of the units to be ADA compliant, and so the parking would be adjacent to those ADA units.
So that would. They're not showing it here.
Yeah, they're going to have to, yeah. So that's just a design thing eventually, when they, when the person dives into the building code. Yeah, that's a good point, though.
So that's a good point.
And you'll have to have a couple general parking lot for access to the spa and, yeah, for general access, right?
Mm-hmm.
Percented, point, 2%, so whatever it is.
I'm, I'm still questioning the restaurants and it not being used for catering of some kind, like a wedding. I see.
Well, I mean, if, if, if a wedding party was going to rent out the bungalows and have an event there, that's, but that's all contained, you know, guests that are on the property. It's not.
What about the 100 guests that live in the neighborhood? I mean, practical question.
Yeah, practical question. That, that.
That's what we're here for.
Yeah, then that's just not the intention, and it's not, I think.
Well, the restaurant seats 70, so that's a limitation factor there.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah, that's what I saw, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, it's a 70-seat restaurant, so we. It'd be a very, it'd be very intimate.
62 rooms, that would easily fill up a 70.
62 units with double the people, I mean, obviously.
At least, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so there's a limiting factor there, too. Okay, good questions.
And what do we talk about exiting and entering when you want to make a left turn?
Oh, wow, you don't do that between Memorial Day and Labor Day.
Ever, ever, ever.
I think that comes when you check in, they give you that.
Yeah, but in the old, in the olden days, as a function, so you can go right on Shrubland if you want to go west.
If you're coming out of there, even, you go right and then to Shrubland, come around if you want to go left, right?
You're precluding that. In other words, you've sort of limited the circulation of such a large project, and I think you need to reconsider that, not that you want to dump a lot of traffic onto Shrubland, because that was closed for a while because of safety issues.
Right, well, we.
People were using it as a shortcut.
Yeah, and I personally witnessed that, and the owner almost got run over his first day. That's why it's now got a, got a chain across it to prevent that from happening.
But it's a circulation issue.
But it, but going eastbound, especially if you're going northeastbound, up to Sag Harbor, for example?
Well, you know, I mean, practical solution is, you take a right here and then a right on Shrubland, and you're on your way. Again, that's, you know, the type of tip that can be given by the concierge, I think. But we'll definitely look at the circulation. I've identified it, so we'll examine it. One of our objects here was, well, in the beginning, the owner wanted to move the whole entrance to Shrubland. That was, and leave County Road 39 as the emergency entrance. But it's, it's pretty easy to get lost if you're trying to find this place, because then you've got to drive down, you've got to take a left, then you've got to circle back. You know, it takes you about half a mile or more out of your way.
How, how are you going to get into this, though? Say you're on 27, right? Come off County Road 39, you're on 27, and there's, there's your hotel on the left. You got to cross over traffic to make a left?
Yeah, I mean, that's, there's a center turning lane. I did it today. Wasn't that bad?
Well, we'd have to have some kind of a traffic study done on this, because this stretch of the woods, when there's an accident, is just totally shut down.
But it, you know, there's 64 units there now. People are doing this as we speak. We're not changing that.
Are they fully occupied now?
Oh, in season? Absolutely. They're, they're even open now. I mean, they're open year-round.
But they have long-term, they're a long-term living there, right?
No, no, it's all, it's all transient.
And then cross-access is really a policy along County Road 39, so I'm quite sure how that fits into this project.
What's the next, what's the next puzzle?
To the east is those three units that we've had cross-access. Savatory, I think Norstix is the immediate one next to this one.
Right next to it?
Yeah.
Norstix.
Yeah, so, um, just want to point that out with, and then you'd want to look at that for your traffic study.
Yeah, you'll be able to get a cross-access into that parking lot where we have it.
Yeah, and our existing parking lines up against there, so would be doable.
I wonder, did you consider moving the entrance at all?
To, to what?
Yes. One of the problems with.
To the east, yeah.
Moving the entrance is that then it bifurcates the parking and doesn't really change the egress and ingress issue. I mean, you still have the same issue. So, it really wasn't a benefit to, say, make it more central or move it to one side or the other.
And you're still a couple hundred feet from your neighboring driveways, right?
The spacing's pretty good there.
It's right opposite, though, isn't it?
I mean, that is a difficult, you know, that's where Greenfield comes out where, you know, there has been concern expressed by residents there for quite some time about that. And it is right opposite.
Yeah.
So, that's a bit of a challenge.
But you did consider an entrance further east?
Yeah, and we considered an entrance on Shrubland as well, but.
What about the one further east? What, what was that?
Well, that's, that's, again, it's going to bifurcate the parking, which I, I don't think is beneficial to, to the site or to, to the traffic. And, and it also, you know, would change our whole entry into the, you know, into the.
It'd still come into the lobby. I mean, there's parking spaces here, right?
Right.
Yeah. It seems like this area in the front of four, five, one, four, and five is, is, is a malleable, flexible area to play with. Anyway, we're giving you ideas. That's what a work session is for.
Started from the aerial, though, by opening up an entrance there, you are going to be taking on quite a bit of vegetation. Anyway, it seems to be heavily vegetated.
My sense is that a lot of that vegetation is going to be disturbed when you get on-site and build all these units. I would not be surprised if it's clear-cut by the end of the day. Yes, sad as it can be, but practically, how are they going to build all this and get equipment in here? Get AI systems in and everything and maneuver around the trees?
Projectile fences.
We've heard it, we've heard it before. But we could do that. We could put project number, then you'd be really restricted.
Well, you know, that's a great way to control the project.
But then you'd be in here every other week.
To, to move it?
You bet. We've had that experience.
Yeah, I mean, at least, you know, last page, there is a, there's an intent that at least to keep a very large trees on, on-site. And not, hopefully not clear-marked, so at least that's, that's a positive step.
Yeah, I mean, it, it looks beautiful, but it's, but then you start looking at it closely and maybe things are, could be made a little bit less.
Do appreciate that it looks like you solved the cut-through problem. Which has bedevilled us and the property owner for, you know, the town and the property owner for many, many years.
Now, let's declare victory and go.
Other than, you know, the fact that it could make it difficult to find access to this, I actually kind of like the idea of coming off Shrubland completely. And then you can put all the stuff into the back of the truck and move through the front. It does, I understand, it does create a problem of entering for people who are unfamiliar with the area. But it does. Then you cut off, you cut off access entirely onto.
Again, there's, and the question of left turns and everything, which is always an issue. But if you force everything onto thirty-nine, you know, not that Shrubland is ideal, but it's certainly a lower-volume road. So, I'm not sure you want to force everything onto thirty-nine either, so.
Yeah, that's, I mean, this is very tricky.
It's a tough balancing.
And there's no deceleration lane to get in here, so, and people who are coming probably are coming from the west, moving east, which means they have to cross that lanes of traffic, even though there's a center turning lane. It's, I mean, we're just trying to look at the problems ahead, which is the whole idea of a work session. And we've been here long enough to, I mean, we've got a lot of engineering traffic experts over here to know that.
And Claire, would this go to the county since there'd be a minor change, relatively minor change?
The use is changing in our eyes, and so that would always be the county.
So, DPW would take a look.
On the curb cut, yeah.
Right, right.
And also accounting for the IA system.
So, I think it might be helpful to us, if you're willing, to consider what we're saying about Shrubland. To do just an overlay. You don't have to do complete drawings. Do an overlay of what this would look like if this was, you know, just an emergency somewhere here. And that if you can reconfigure, put the parking, as George said, in this area and move the buildings down here. Just rethink it.
Okay.
Is what we're asking. We don't expect, but work, work plan, you know, just some drawings that we could take a look at. You might already have them in your office.
Uh, no, we don't. You know, you know, my, my big concern, I, I caution the client away from the Shrubland's entrance. And I'll, I'll tell you why. And number one, Shrubland is always a problem because it's such a small road. And number two, no matter what you tell people, they're going to take a left turn on Shrubland's.
Is there, is there not a light there? Is there a tunnel?
No, there is, to the point about making that the primary entrance. There's a, a no-turn, no-left-turn restriction coming on to, or no, and it's actually a no-eastbound travel restriction. Opposed it is no-left turn, but it's actually no-eastbound travel between six AM and ten AM.
I thought they did away with that.
No.
Uh, there was a couple of week test and then they stopped it. People still do it all the time.
They did it right in front of me today.
If there isn't a police officer sitting on the corner, they do it, but.
And, and that, quite frankly, is, in my, my opinion to the owner was, that's more dangerous to your people than a well-established, well-lit entrance right off County Road thirty-nine. Not to mention more respectful of the neighbors because pushing a lot more traffic onto, you know, Shrubland's. I mean, that's the whole reason there's no left turn there.
Right, right. I mean, I, I think this, the way it's set up now, you know, it's a self-select. If you want to go, you know, north towards Sag Harbor or something like that, you would take the Shrubland entrance. If you want to go, you know, south into the village or something like that, you'd take the thirty-nine entrance. So, you're kind of naturally splitting your, your exiting traffic, at least.
And I hold to the thought that if I were designing this, I would definitely put the driveway further east. I would have a beautiful entrance, an alley of trees, so that you're not killing them all. And that you can then easily, I mean, so it's parallel to the other building. Did you say it was Norstik clear?
Uh, the one to the east, yeah.
You're clear of a driveway across the road. And I just think it would make for much better circulation as opposed to coming in the way it comes in. And you still have access to all those buildings, to your hospitality buildings, to the restaurant, to the check-in building. I'd give it a thought.
Well, I'm actually drawing it.
Have it in ten minutes for us. The, the properties north and northeast, are those?
The vacant.
To be developed or are they preserved or?
Anthony, could you click on this? The one to the east is part of that subdivision, the one immediately to the east. And the one to the north, I think, is town of South Hampton. Does that make sense?
I think it's Suffolk County, actually. Maybe Suffolk.
That big.
Maybe Suffolk County.
Is that, is that right?
So, that's not going to get.
The one to the north is open space, yeah.
That will not get developed.
Yeah, the other one is part of that subdivision.
It's part of that subdivision.
It has open space.
It has open space, so there's no, no development pressures on either of those.
And no cross-access to those, okay.
Okay, yeah, you can see down here, this is, this is the piece, I think.
Yeah. Any other suggestions? We think we've given you enough, right?
No.
Good ideas.
Listen, let's, let's get it out now, like you said, that's what a work session is.
One more idea. How about pickleball?
Let me tell you, there was a, a big discussion about whether it was going to be tennis or pickle, okay? That had to take up an afternoon.
And what about paddle? That's, that's the newer, new one, yeah.
The architecture is lovely.
Yeah, we have.
I mean, you can note about that. I like it.
The layout of the, of the site is actually very nice.
When you look at it, it looks really wonderful. And then when you start into the nitty-gritty.
Well, I think when you get into the nitty-gritty, it looks pretty, pretty dynamite, too.
But it has to be workable, you know? Sometimes on paper, it, it looks like it works and then when you go in, you, oh, I can't save those trees. I can't actually take those trees down and, or they're wrecked.
At the beginning, right.
Which is the whole purpose. And thank you for being open-minded.
And we'll see him on the next pre-submission conference, it's the twenty-eighth. There was some talk about the units. I may have not got the description right, but this is a work in progress. So, if they have existing sixty-four units, their CEO shows that, you know, that's all, that's fine. Because it's just a pre-submission conference. It's a guide.
Okay, but we'll see some, we'll see some alternative layouts and sketch plans. I think it's important. Okay, thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to give you that. I'll take those, I'll take those and I'll put them in the file.
You want these, Claire, too?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Claire, should we move on to you or jump to Anthony and give you a printout?
You know, what's, what's kind of going to come?
Oh, yes, I want to do printout.
Yeah, but I'll be back in a couple minutes.
Okay, we're going to jump. We have a scheduling issue, so we're going to jump to fourteen and fifteen. Printout, this is, consider completeness for two fifty-four Tuckahoe Lane in Tuckahoe.
Thank you for doing that.
Welcome.
We have resolutions and some small notes here.
Take one and pass them down?
Thank you. This is two fifty-four Tuckahoe Lane. It's, it's actually a lot line modification. It's a little bit bigger, but it's, it's an R.
R fifteen?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, this is R fifteen. We're considering completeness. It's R fifteen in Tuckahoe. It consists of two lots. One is the, the first one is the applicant's lot. And the second one is their neighbor and they're proposing to transfer forty-two hundred square feet from their lot to the neighbor. They're, they'll still be in compliance with R fifteen dimension regulations. And, but the survey only shows the proposed lot line rather than the existing and the proposed. So, we've asked them to revise their survey and affect it in complete, and then they'll come back with, with the remainder of the information.
Good, thank you. Motion to deem this in complete by Gloria, second by Cree. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, five in favor, two absent. And then you have fifteen, Charlotte Lee Smith.
Yes.
One forty-two, South Road, West Hampton?
That's also a two, a two-lot subdivision. It's, it's a R forty and the lot measures one point one zero acres. The proposed lots would be undersized, the two lots are flag lot. Here, let me pull it up. There we go. So, it'd be two lots, if you could see it on the, on the map that I handed out. They're, they measure twenty-four thousand and a little over twenty-four thousand, a little twenty, a little over twenty-eight thousand square feet. It's previously improved with a two-story, single-family dwelling here. And there's a two-story accessory structure in the back along with a pool with a patio, a cabana, and a gazebo.
So, where will the new line come?
The new line is being proposed.
So, the pool.
It's actually almost down the center. Yeah, the pool would be on one and this, this will be a flag lot and the pool would, it's about twenty feet south of the pool.
And what about that accessory structure? That stays on to the lot, lot two?
As far as I know, we'll, we'll, we could get more information. James is here for the applicant. But, yeah, I think I, I question the intention, like, if these things will stay or not, I don't know. But James is here, he can go on and ask questions.
Is it complete or incomplete?
It's incomplete because we want them to show water and sanitary, which isn't on there.
Well, they have to go to ZBIA for this.
They will for lot area and also there's, there's frontage issues. So, they're encompassing this abandoned road here. And there'll be frontage issues, road frontage issues and potentially setback.
So, are these pre-existing lots, because they're in R forty zone now?
It's all one lot right now.
It is all one lot, yeah.
So, it was never subdivided?
It was never, no, no, they're, they're proposing to subdivide it.
Okay, so they have to have the one lot right now.
Two, two fifty-three, seven square feet.
Two half-size lots.
So, let's deem it in complete and move forward. The motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor, opposed, extensions, five in favor, two absent. Thanks. You're done, printout.
Thank you very much. I'm going to stay, but as long as I can, I just didn't want to get stuck.
Okay, great. Okay, so we're Claire. Is Claire here? No. So, Anthony, why don't we give you Chicken Bar Hill?
Actually, Chicken Bar is off the agenda.
Chicken Bar is off the agenda. Gaspar and Devira.
That's misplaced on the agenda, but that's actually a map signature that Gloria did, so if you want to acknowledge that.
I have done that.
Okay, so we're acknowledging Gaspar and Devira, Tyrese, a map signature? Okay, then.
Re- sent.
Anthony, where are you?
I'll do Bud Hampton.
Yeah, let's do Bud Hampton.
I thought that was a very good report.
I have one here. It's with very slight modifications that you would never notice, but sometimes I look at words and I'm like, eh, I don't know about that, so.
Okay, so the one that you sent, I should just ignore?
Yeah, I'll give you this new one that's basically.
We took off nine eleven.
Well, now they're here.
Oh, they are here.
You want to be here, Anthony, or there, or whether you? Who's here representing them?
Carl.
All right. Everyone's familiar with this site. This is the Carvel Building in Bridgehampton. It's across from the Bridgehampton Commons Development. This is an HB-zoned piece of property. You can see it's shopping center across the street with some more commercial uses as you head east. Office District, Hamlet Office, Hamlet Commercial. And of course, you get some more mixed, but more residential as you come from points west. So, you'll see in my report, I sort of refer to this as like a transition zone from the residential to the commercial core. And actually, that's supported by the zoning, HC and HO. Those are transition areas. That's why the designs have to look residential.
In HO.
And, and, yeah, so. So, this is an existing site with an existing building. It's approximately, it says a thousand, it's more like nine seventy-nine, nine fifty, something like that. Building that's going to be used for a change of use for non-medical cannabis dispensary. I'm on page one of my report, and actually, the second paragraph sort of just describes, you know, the zoning and then around the area. On page two, this is a special exception use, so it's subject to the general standards of three thirty, one twenty-two of the town code and then one sixty-two, two-six of the town code, which are the specific. Do you have a copy of this, Carl? So, we had a pre-submission conference on December fourteenth. It was held open until February eighth. And then at which time, board closed, it's a thirty day written comment here. I've broken down the comments, just sort of summarizing the opposition. There was a general lack of support for non-medical cannabis within the town in general. I think we heard that, that the town should have opted out. Potential for widespread social implications, such as gateway impacts and addiction, driving while under the influence and public perception issues, which could affect property values. This was presented to the board as, as comments. Such facilities already operate and therefore the demand is already being filled. Some people are not necessarily against the sale of non-medical cannabis, but just not at the subject site. The Carvel site is an historic in the sense that it's been a fixture of the community for decades and we heard a lot of that. This is a very visible site. It's, like I said, sort of a gateway into the commercial core.
It's also totally a landscape, so it's, it's just this big open.
And that seems to be weird. And, and that seems to be weirdly, a lot of Carvels seem to operate like that. So yeah, it's, it's, you know, very visible, it's a highly visible site, there's concern about access by minors, uh, traffic and parking impacts associated with high traffic volumes, uh, the close proximity to the Bridgehampton schools, uh, and then they talked about significant buffering, architectural features, and no signage that would, you know, uh, indicate, uh, colloquially or otherwise, uh, any products. And that comes under the state law, by the way, that mandates that on the signage. Uh, in terms of support, um, you know, the few comments that we got, they talked about this being a social equity, uh, approach, um, by the, um, state and that the, the person who's getting the license is part of that, um, that there would be positive impacts in the community such as public safety, social justice, and equitable economic development. Uh, they put on the record that non-medical cannabis has been approved by the town board as a use permitted by special exception and therefore they would expect the application to be treated like anybody else regardless of the, the perceptions about cannabis in general. They indicated support for the project, that this is a safe, highly regulated industry with tax benefits for the community and that the cultural and policy perceptions about it has shifted over the years and that the community should, uh, support it rather than...
Anthony, one quick question, are you aware of any changes in the New York State legislation? I know there was some talk about...
So there was, there is...
Revisions?
Minor revisions that wouldn't affect the application per se, but they did clarification on what a community center is, for example, or, or, you know, how it's defined.
That's New York State's definition?
New York State, yeah, the ones that, you know, be adopted in our regs as well. Uh, but, you know, I actually had a meeting with Kathleen and, and...
That's why I asked.
And, uh, there was not much in terms of subsequent, in other words, distances didn't change, um, the requirements didn't change, there was just some clarification on some issues, so. So what I would say is, because this is like, we have a catch-all statement in our pre-submission conference reports, anything that subsequently changes in the law would have to be addressed in, in the application. And actually, at the end of this, maybe we'll add a statement to that effect as a matter of fact in, in the comments, so.
Thanks.
That's good. Uh, so in terms of the comments, the first one, uh, the applicant's gonna have to submit a formal special exception petition demonstrating compliance with the general and the specific standards. Uh, the second one is a general standard, this is three thirty, one twenty-two G, and this talks about access facilities, uh, traffic, um, you know, entrances, driveways and all that. So I put in there, the existing driveways and parking will need to be redesigned to accommodate a landscaping buffer along the roadway, uh, enhance vehicular and pedestrian access to the property in accordance with any requirements of the DOT. So when the DOT gets a referral, they may have requirements on the changes of the, the driveway and any improvements within, you know, the right away with sidewalks and such as we normally do. And minimize the impacts to the character of the community. Um, for example, one access driveway into the site and potential implementation of coordinated access to ultimately get to the light, which is not too far away at the, at the shopping center.
Yep.
Ideally, that would be the best situation, uh, as part of, uh, you know, a review to this project and subsequent redevelopment, you know, that may happen on the other lots.
Anthony, do you think timed parking would serve any benefit here? Because I know one of the concerns of the community with, you know, people who go into the store, um, you know, buy the product and then start having fun with the product in the, in the parking lot.
Okay, so what, what I would say to that is, in terms of, the town hasn't done anything with onsite consumption or anything like that, so they can't sit in the building and lounge and it can't be an outdoor area for them to lounge, there's regulations regarding onsite consumption. I could certainly, uh, if you wanna look at the issue, I could certainly say perhaps, um, looking at timed parking to, you know, little consideration for, uh, you know, parking limitations, uh, such that people are not, you know, sitting around and loitering in whatever language they're gonna use, I think that's, you know, we can make mention of it before it would light. Third comment, uh, it says under the specific standards, three thirty dash one sixty-two point two six E, that the planning board may request a traffic impact analysis. Um, so the planning board is going to, in, require an impact, uh, analysis. Uh, it's the first project in the town, so, uh, as I say here, it's the town's first non-medical cannabis retail store. At least on the onset, I think there's going to be, uh, interest, uh, people are gonna be curious, people will go. Um, so I think even on the onset, you know, the unveiling of this, there will be traffic. I do note here that, uh, heavy traffic during the initial open is expected, though it may diminish over time if other facilities open up. I'm not trying to make any sweeping generalizations, I'm just, you know, pointing out that when we get a traffic analysis, probably should note this, I would like to see what the anticipation is from the, you know, grand opening of something like this and, and how over time, um, you know, these, because this is the first one for the town, so.
And again, it's always an issue, is you can't make a left-hand turn out of that lot. I mean, people make it now out of Carvel and it's like you're taking your life in your hands.
Yeah, no, no question about it. Um, so, and I even say, given the well-documented traffic condition issues that seem to worsen from year to year, the planning board will require the traffic impact analysis.
It's already been done.
Carl, oh, you've done it, I was gonna ask if...
It's in process.
These cannabis stores are considered high-volume stores? Or is anybody doing traffic counts or has anybody seen studies at other places that how much volume actually is?
We're kind of threshold here on, on this application, so we'll see what ours shows.
I don't know of the accident, there's an accident report, well, that'll show up in a traffic study.
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Is it possible to get to, to demand that, that you have to use the light to make a left turn? I, it, I'm not sure where the property line is in relation to where...
It, it doesn't line up.
Yeah, the, it's a little, the light's a little east of this.
I think the bus shelter would have to be moved.
Yeah, it, you know, there, you know, like I said, I want to at least throw the concept there.
Do you mind zooming in a little bit, Anthony?
Yeah, you're looking right here.
There's the light over there and the store's...
Store is too far away.
To the west, yeah.
And Connor owns, uh, all of this though, right up to the light, I believe.
He does, yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
There is a bus shelter in the way.
Yeah, there is.
Identified with the earlier project proposals.
For sure, yes, absolutely. But the point being that whether this project or even ultimately the ultimate build-out of this, the idea is that we wanna get people to this light.
Absolutely.
Regardless of any use that goes on really, because it's, it's a terrible location.
So can we say, establish cross-access?
Yes, absolutely. And I might have said it in here, but yes, I will, uh...
Under which one, Anthony, three or four?
Actually, I probably didn't say it, but I will say it there.
Under where?
Are you saying if these lots come in for future site plan?
Future cross-access.
Future cross-access?
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, we'll keep, we're, we're, just gonna say, potential coordinate, I wanna see what the traffic report shows before the planning board commits to any...
Sure.
Let's see what it shows, maybe, you know, it's a look. Uh, on three, you also see, under three thirty dash one sixty-two, twenty-six K, the planning board, um, in this case, a pedestrian circulation plan. Uh, it's also one of the special exception standards, so, um, are there sidewalks? Yeah, there are sidewalks out here. Uh, let's, you know, I'd be curious to see.
Unfortunately.
We have access to, uh, the shopping center there, there's some more commercial to the, to the east, so, um, the code allows the planning board to ask for a pedestrian circulation plan, um, so I would recommend...
It's a good idea.
Again, we're in uncharted territories, so I think that the planning board's gotta make sure they, they're gonna do a comprehensive review. Uh, number four, on page four at the top there, talks about adequate buffers. Uh, so you'll see, the formal site plan application shall include a detailed landscaping plan that provides substantial buffering along Montauk Highway and internal landscaping to improve aesthetics. This is a highly visible site, it's on a segment, this is where I say it's on a segment of roadway, that's a transition zone between residential and commercial core of Bridgehampton to the east. It's a standalone building in the middle of an asphalt parking lot with little to no landscaping or vegetation, so, um, so that's, that's a major site plan issue that we'll have to address. Uh, number five talks about architecture, the applicant has put on the record that there would be no changes to the existing building design. Uh, one, three thirty dash one sixty-two, two six E, uh, talks about the overall, or overall appearance of, of the building, um, you know, you don't want national chain style or franchise style, you know, it's gotta be in the vernacular of the local community. Um, so I suggest there that the applicant ultimately, uh, have some type of preliminary discussion with the ARB to get guidance to any changes needed to building design. While the planning board acknowledges this is an existing building and the architectural style may be acceptable for an ice cream retailer, uh, the board also finds the franchise style architecture with floor to ceiling windows is not appropriate for a cannabis dispensary, it's supposed to be more discreet.
Well, we, the planning board would not have allowed the Carvel to be built as it was, as it is.
Hundred percent.
So...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's pre-existing design, which...
Hundred percent, uh, but, but, you know, again, I, you know, not to put too fine a point on it, but as the site sits right now, if, you know, if you're gonna put a retail there, it's, it might as well have an arrow that says selling pot here. Um, it's a very exposed site, so we gotta deal with that. Yep, so that's, that's where we're talking about that, again, it's a gateway, so if you're gonna have it, it should be in the traffic site. Um, six, uh, this is a section of the special exception regulations that talk about, uh, the distance requirements. Um, so six A, B, and C, uh, retail cannabis cannot be in the same road and within five hundred feet of school grounds. Uh, the retail cannabis store is not on the same road and within five hundred feet of a community facility as may be redefined by the state or clarified by the state. Uh, and the retail cannabis store is not on the same road and within two hundred feet of the building occupied for House of Worship. So what I'm suggesting in that one is that, um, when someone comes in with a formal application, they should give us a map, some type of radius from the property. The town code defines how you measure these from various points and there should be some type of map that shows that indicating that they comply with that standard, so.
Good idea.
Number seven talks about a detailed safety management plan, the, the, the special exception regs and frankly, the New York State Office of Management, Office of Cannabis Management have a whole series of, that the town doesn't get involved in terms of safety requirements. Uh, nevertheless, we should have some type of safety plan in terms of, uh, uh, lighting, uh, cash in the business, how this is all gonna work, what's security cameras, um, what the policy, you know, the state mandates is policies regarding, uh, employees and, um, onsite consumption, you know, these, these types of things need to be laid out, so, uh, we'll ask for that information as well. Uh, eight talks about the signage, uh, again, the state mandates and then puts in place a sign requirements which our code mimics, uh, but the key of it is it says that, um, really it's a prohibition from using or displaying colloquial references to cannabis or depictions of cannabis, cannabis products, paraphernalia, or the imagery or action of smoking or vaping, so, um, signage just has to be, you know, advertising the name of the business, maybe an address, maybe a phone number, but, um...
Related to that, Carl is...
No leads.
No pot leads, Carl.
Is your, is your applicant in love with the name, Bud Hampton?
He really likes the name, yes, he does.
Yeah, we can't guide him into something a little less fast-paced, you know, high or something?
I'll continue to have conversations.
To me, that's a colloquial reference, uh, to cannabis, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. But in any case, your point is, is no...
Yes.
And of course, um, with the withdrawal of, you know, the other applications that were surrounding this, we're looking at this as a single lot. This is actually a type-two action under CEPR. However, a no further environmental review is required. The traffic impact analysis and the pedestrian circulation plans are special exception criteria. Uh, so we're gonna review those under those, under, under those regulations, we're compliant with those regulations, so. And those really the issues that I have, um, as it relates to this, if the board has anything else or wants to add anything.
I have, uh, just a point of clarification, if that's okay. So we're, we're fine with the vast majority of this, uh, we think it's a very well-written report and we're happy to abide by it. I just wanted a clarification in five. When you, when you talk about windows, certainly the, any changes to the appearance will need to go to the ARB, any signage will need to go to the ARB, but are you looking for them to replace the windows?
I'm looking for them to redesign that building, if you want my honest answer.
Yes.
Here's the problem, uh, again, and I wanna, it is the first application that this board is reviewing within, you know, our regulations, putting aside with the existing town. Um, if, if you said to me, we're just gonna keep that building and just put in, I, I just, that, to me, we have the special exception standards that talks about character of the community and architectural design. Uh, the building needs to be fixed up and redesigned so that it looks, there should be a boutique style i- in the vernacular of Bridgehampton, uh, but not windows, uh, you know, advertising, um, all the edibles and paraphernalia and everything combined in there.
So by redesign, you're talking about appearance, you're not talking about demolishing and rebuilding?
No, I don't want you to demolish it, no, I want you to keep it nine hundred and fifty square feet.
But change the way it looks.
But change the way it looks. Because the reception is at the windows, it's like...
Are you asking for them to take out the windows and put your windows in? We're just looking...
Put up a facade to make the windows smaller or something?
Or, or we could put a facade up and, you know...
Because really, the, the things that the planning board is considering and requirements, design site should be, should, this should be like the standard for future applications coming, we shouldn't, so everybody that comes down there should be able to mirror kind of what we're asking for.
Yeah, and I, I don't, there's no opposition to changing the appearance, I just wanted clarity on, on what exactly we could expect.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, since it is the gateway, this is a new use, we're gonna invest the money in, in, in allowing the business there, which, you know, may be a very profitable business, I don't know, but it would, it would move the applicant, um, particularly with, for, for like a PR standard. Um, you know, you want the building to look good and not, you know...
I mean, Bridgehampton is farming, so barn-like?
Yeah, something, you know, that...
Well, I, that's, that's the thing, I mean, changing the actual footprint or the structure of the building to something that looks like a barn, that's kind of a reach. If you wanna change the appearance of the existing structure...
It doesn't have to be a barn, but you can certainly add exterior elements to it that completely change it.
Okay.
Which is really what, you know...
Well, that's why I said barn-like.
And the historic district now, that unfortunately just ends at Snake Hollow, just as a stone's throw. Take a look at some of those designs.
Okay, now, yeah, I'm with, I just thought you meant maybe changing the roof, which would be an issue, but you're just looking at facade changes to change the appearance, okay.
Drastically.
Drastic facade.
We don't, they're lies your problem, Carl, I can't point to anything else in the town to say, look how nicely they did this one. Um, so, Mr. Connor, uh, could do something nice then?
We'll, we'll discuss it, sure.
All right. Does the board have any others?
I think you covered it all.
Yeah, I think it was a good report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you all.
So we're keeping this...
So this is just a draft?
Yeah, well, we could, I have to find my revisions and you could adopt it, it's, it's fine.
What are the revisions, just like?
I was...
Why don't, why don't you redo it?
I'll, I'll, I'll...
Yeah, there's...
I'll have to come next time, Carl.
Yeah.
You wanna adopt it, adopt it next time?
Yeah, I'll just make a few revisions and I'll, I'll put on next time.
Yeah, but change the wording, yeah, specifically. Okay, thank you.
Ask them about the name, Carl.
Claire, Claire is not here, Anthony, so you wanna go to nine eleven Flanders?
So, um...
Are they here?
Yeah, Kevin, there might be somebody here, maybe Keith Brown, and there might be other people.
On Zoom?
On Zoom.
Okay.
So, just the, while we're reading there, so the board knows, we, this board retained AKRF to assist with the traffic review of this project. And what has happened is, is there was a budget, um, certain work to be done and included for meetings. Um, there was some back and forth that was going, waiting, um, our consultant was trying to get additional information, trying to assist, uh, in that, you know, with dealing with the DOT, um, revised, you know, the document, I sent you the two documents. Uh, our consultant feels like, you know, some of the information still hasn't been provided as it relates to the pass-by data. Uh, the suggestion was that we would, uh, get an expanded, uh, proposal from AKRF outlining the additional service and information that's still needed and what it would cost to finish the, the review, uh, you know, which is my suggestion, that's what I would do. I believe the applicant is here, uh, we received a letter, um, at one thirty today from the applicant's representative. Um, it's a few pages on a cover letter and then some information, uh, you know, ultimately, I didn't, I didn't read the letter, but the gist of it is that they would like the board to utilize the pass-by information they've, um, put forth in their, their report and proceed with the CEPR review.
How can we do that?
I'll, I'll let the applicant speak to that, but that's, that's not my recommendation. Kevin, is there anybody here?
Is it too early? Can, can they be given a call or should we just move on?
We'll come back to it, because all I was gonna suggest then is that, you know, I get that proposal from AKRF. Actually, I think we could do that.
We could do that.
Let's do that and, you know, and we'll, we'll call it again, if the applicant pops up, we'll give them an option.
Okay, so we have an action here?
No action, I just wanted to, you know, we've got, we've got a second proposal.
Just raise their hand.
Okay, that, that, just raise your hand.
Here we go.
Madam Chair, members of the board, can you hear me?
Barely.
Hold on down.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you. Can you speak? So, we'll get a level.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, perfect. Just identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, Keith Brown, with the law firm of Brown, Old Millie, 538 Broad Hollow Road, Suite 301 West, Melville, New York, 11747, for the applicant.
Okay, Anthony, just a second. Anthony, do you need to make any introductory remarks before he jumps in?
Now, did, uh, Keith, were you, were you listening when I just spoke, or?
Yes, I heard everything.
Okay.
Okay.
And, um, you know, we, we understand, uh, the position, and we have actually prepared a, a letter in response, uh, addressed to the chair and to the planning board member, so, uh, if it's okay, I'm just going to read it. So, "We're writing to you in connection with the traffic review of the application, specifically with respect to the pass-by traffic rate issue as it relates to the project. It's come to our attention that the planning board is threatening to issue a positive declaration pursuant to the CEPR because it believes that the applicant is not being responsible and is unwilling to provide to the board with the town's, oh, sorry, and that board's pass-by traffic called AKRF with the pass-by traffic data on New York State Route 25. The planning board is demanding that the pass-by traffic rate as provided in the applicant's traffic impact statement be verified by the New York State Department of Transportation. The town planning board is using the pass-by rate issue, we believe, as an opportunity to further delay zoning approval for the proposed project. As a reminder, the applicant's family has owned the property since 1965 and has been, been paid taxes on it ever since. Based on our review of the town records, in the last three site plan applications which the planning board has reviewed for the exact same use, a traffic impact study was prepared by the applicant and was reviewed by the town's independent traffic consultant and the planning board. The pass-by traffic rates utilized by the applicant's traffic impact studies were never questioned and was accepted by the planning board. However, our application without any basis is the only one where the town's traffic consultant has demanded that the applicant verify the pass-by rate with the New York State DOT. First and foremost, this assumes that the DOT, as a matter of procedure, verifies pass-by rates, and in fact, the New York State DOT has never done so in the past. Excuse me. As, as such, this demand for verification by the New York State DOT for this one application is, in our opinion, arbitrarily precious. Certainly, this is not the first application filed with the town seeking to develop a gas station fueling station with a convenience store. The town must have records of the pass-by rate applied to other parts of other projects. Our office has submitted a Freedom of Information Act request with the town for this information, but we respectfully request that the town provide the traffic studies and the pass-by rates accepted by the town for these other applications as soon as possible, so that AKRF and the town can determine the appropriate pass-by rate to use for this application based upon previously accepted pass-by rates. The applicant's traffic engineer, Stonefield Engineering, prepared the traffic impact study and utilized the pass-by traffic rate based on the combined data set of pass-by rates for land uses 944 and 945 as published by the Institute of Traffic Engineers, or the ITE, the industry standard recognized by all traffic experts nationwide. As the board and AKRF are well aware, the ITE trip generation manual is widely recognized as an acceptable industry standard publication commonly utilized within the traffic engineering field and has been accepted for various region 10 New York State DOT applications in the past. Moreover, the New York State DOT reviewed the traffic impact study as part of the ongoing hybrid work permit process of project. The New York State DOT reviewed the traffic impact study and had no comments provided to pass-by rate applied by Stonefield Engineering, our New York State licensed traffic expert in this application. Our traffic consultant, Amanda LaRosa of Stonefield Engineering, has extensive traffic expertise on Long Island. A history of Stonefield's communication with the New York State DOT is attached to this letter that demonstrates the extensive and exhaustive effort our traffic consultants have made to the New York State DOT to comply with AKRF's demand. As previously noted and that, and is demonstrated in Stonefield's correspondence, the New York State DOT does not customarily comply on the pass-by rate applied in a traffic impact study. The New York State DOT's latest response is dated February 22nd of this year, less than a month ago, uh, prepared by, and I can't pronounce this person's name, Alain, Almond Joa, Fajol, Fajolo. The PE, he is the permit section manager of traffic safety and mobility, and he offers no objections to the methodologies or findings in the traffic impact study. Not withstanding New York State DOT's acceptance of the traffic impact study, AKRF, the town's outside consultant, continues to question the ITE data. Further, the board is threatening to issue a positive declaration because another agency is unwilling to respond to the pass-by rates. Ironically, the planning department and AKRF has been in possession prior traffic impact studies which contain similar pass-by rates and is perfectly capable of accepting Stonefield's pass-by rate applied here without the need to verify the same with the DOT and took it at its wild goose tracks. The issuance of a positive declaration is totally unwarranted in this instance and will do nothing to get the New York State DOT approval of the data contained in our traffic impact study. The applicant has cooperated and provided the planning board with all requested information about this project. We have complied with every request for information made by the planning board and as traffic consultant each and every step of the way. A positive declaration will do nothing and step further delay what has already been overly lengthy zoning approval process and will not reveal any additional information before it makes its determination on the application. Therefore, a positive declaration is without any basis whatsoever. We respectfully request the planning board to drop the pass-by rates utilized by Stonefield Engineering in their traffic impact study as generally accepted industry standard and properly issue a negative declaration for this application forthwith. At this juncture, we believe we have provided all necessary information to the planning board to render a negative declaration. Should this not be the case, please identify specifically what information the board requires. We look forward to the planning board rendering a determination in this manner and reserve all remedies and law and equity to protect our rights.
Thank you. That's the letter, that's the letter that you submitted at 1:30 today?
That is, for.
Right.
You know, just.
And we just received, just for the record, the request, uh, for the, uh, additional information was received over yesterday, so we, we drafted the letter and got it to the planning department as soon as we could.
Anthony?
So, you know, just to clarify, this pass-by information, you know, since the planning board is, you know, demanding this and asking for it, AKRF on behalf of the planning board is making these statements. So, I, you know, I just want to clarify that this board didn't say X, Y, and Z. We're getting recommendations from our consultant, and that's where we're taking our recommendations from. Uh, you know, if the questions about pass-by data and our previous traffic studies that were done, we're happy to provide the applicant. They've submitted the foil, we'll get that information. Uh, you know, what I would say then is, I still need AKRF then to turn around and say that that information, then if, if that's the direction this board wants to go, that's okay. I still need to get AKRF then to say, okay, to finish that, I'm going to need X amount of, you know, more time and money. I'm, I'm more than happy to provide that information. They foiled it, we'll get it to them, and we'll provide AKRF with that information. I don't have a problem with that. But it still needs to be done. I mean, that's the bottom line.
And it seems.
And we don't have a problem paying, Madam Chair, we don't have a problem paying any of the extra money for AKRF to conclude the work that they need to do for, for the board. However, if you're Paul, when we were there last summer, we were asked to do additional accounts, you know, in the shoulder season and when school buses, uh, were on the road, which we did. Uh, we provided that information, so it's been, uh, almost five months since that has happened, and in what, uh, transpired in the, in the interim was AKRF asking for DOT to verify the pass-by rates that were used in the traffic impact study. And, you know, we can't prove a negative. DOT just, they don't do it as a matter of course. And the point of the letter was to say that there are other applications that have been before the town planning board, and the planning department has the information in their archives that can be pulled so that, you know, verification of the pass-by rate can be done by your outside consultants and also your in-house traffic safety department. So, you know, we just feel like we're being, we're being asked to do something from a, a, an outside agency that they just don't do. And the information is, is right in the disposal of the planning department staff, the outside consultants, and ultimately, the planning board. And, and I just want to add one last thing is that our information is based on the IT manual, which the other applications are also based on the same IT manual, which is the industry standard nationwide. So, there, there shouldn't be a question at this point of what the applicable pass-by rate, uh, should be used for this project.
It seems to me, Mr. Brown, that, um, in reading some of the documentation, and it's, some of it just came in, is that there are other questions as well. There's questions about the roundabout. Uh, there's questions about, uh, growth, percentage of growth. There's at least six or seven questions that, that the traffic consultant is flagging. So, I don't know if you have those questions? You have those? Does he have those, Anthony?
I'm, I'm sure they have all the documents from AKRF.
So, we are guided by our traffic consultant, and he is requesting additional information. So we can only really go by that in terms of professional process, and, um, he needs another, I don't know how much. Sorry?
If there's additional information, we absolutely will provide it, but the, the big question on the table was the pass-by rates. The other stuff, I believe, was, was minor, well, in, uh, in respect to the pass-by rates.
Well, we'll wait to hear what he has to say.
So, so what I will do then is, we will honor, obviously, we will honor the foil request, um, and I will get that, that information also to our, to AKRF, and say, this is the information that we're being, that the, you know, we're being asked to, to utilize, um, you know, proceed with preparing, you know, the final report and the final analysis.
Right. And, and you agree that we, well, we need A R K F, AKRF to work on this? Is this an additional piece of work for them?
Yeah, I mean, you know, but, you know, and I spoke to the applicant about it, but I'm, I'm happy to get that information to AKRF, so.
Right, but, I mean, keep in mind that whatever you foil, it could be apples to oranges. Each application is different. Um.
And I mean, I, I, this is the first application on a double roundabout that I've.
Yeah, right.
I've seen, so.
So it's somewhat unique. We don't have any other application, as Gloria says, on a double roundabout. So, so there are issues. So if you're in agreement, then we can have AKRF be in communication with us, with them, to answer the other questions that are on here.
No, I will, I will present, um, Matthew Carmody from AKRF with the information.
Yeah.
And say, here's the, here's the very, you know, the information, here's what the applicant has stated on the record. Uh, please let us know how much the rest of the analysis will be, any additional information beyond the pass, and then we'll get that and he'll, he'll finish it up.
Okay. Is that good for you?
Could that work?
Keith, does that work for you?
It, it does, but I just want to, um, clarify for the record that we are not going to wait for verification, uh, which is not forthcoming from the DOT any longer. That this, this determination will be made, you know, by your outside consultant, planning staff, and, and made in form of the recommendation of a final, uh, you know, memorandum to the planning board.
Well, the planning staff is not, they're not traffic experts, so that's why we.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm happy to do that. It's just, I'm relying on our traffic consultant, you know, and we'll see what, you know.
Specialty.
AKRF says about that. I just don't.
I mean, I, I don't feel comfortable saying yes to what Keith just said with, without our traffic consultant saying, yes, he's, so, we need, we need that clarification.
If, if you did, what would be the purpose of hiring a consultant in the first place?
Exactly, exactly.
I mean, I'm, you know, I know how to make a right.
So you're saying he's asking for something that doesn't exist. I, we don't know that. He would know that. Why would he ask for it if there's no answer?
But, but it's even worse than that. It's not that it doesn't exist, it's that the information is at your disposal. We know what the pass-by rates that were applied. It, it's by use, right? This, this is the first time that this use has been proposed, right? And the IT manual, right, it, it's based on engineering and science that the rate determines how much trips, uh, are generated by the site and how many are just derived from people passing by. So that percentage that's applied is the, is the question. And that, that percentage has been utilized in every other traffic impact study that has been submitted for a gas station convenience store in town. So therefore, your traffic outside consultant can tell you what that is, and he can say that he believes, um, his expertise as a licensed New York State engineer, that this is the percentage that should be utilized based on the precedent of what the town has done in the past and based on the IT manual.
Okay, so why don't we flag that particular issue for him when Anthony speaks with him? And, and go from there. Okay? We hear you, and we have your letter, and it'll be distributed to us.
Yep.
You came in at 1:30 today, so.
Yeah, I just couldn't get it out.
Everybody's up against deadlines.
And most of us were on our way here, so we weren't able to read anything.
Keith, you sent a copy to, to us in attorney's office?
I did, Ms. Clara. I sent a copy to you, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was, it was just at the end, I just couldn't get it out there, Keith, today, but, uh.
No, it's fine.
Well, let's review it, and.
We just want to see, we want to see a light at the end of the tunnel, and that's.
So, so do we.
You know, the pass-by rate is a big issue, and, and, and the pass-by rate is a big issue, and then specifically, whatever else, you know, the outside consultant needs and the planning board needs, you know.
You'll provide.
You know, yeah.
Okay, good. Well, it sounds like we have two willing partners. So thank you very much for, for being here today. That's it, Anthony. There's no action.
There's no action. We'll probably, you know, between them, we'll, yeah, and we'll get, we'll get it out.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
So no action, Keith. Thank you. You're on the record.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay.
64 Lewis Road.
Lewis.
Want to keep going? Yeah, Claire, is that all right?
My stuff is finished, yeah.
Okay, so Anthony, let's go to 16, 64 Lewis Road.
This was a, we're just rescheduling a, um, oh, it's actually 60s. Hold on.
64 Lewis Road?
Yep, it's a three-lot subdivision. Um, we actually, it was deemed complete. We had a hearing scheduled, and there was a noticing issue, so we're just rescheduling the hearing.
Oh, okay.
For April 25th.
For April 25th.
25th.
Rescheduling. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by George, all in favor. Opposed extensions, five in favor, two absent, to April 25th. And Farrell Butter Lane?
So, the, the board knows we have both a pending subdivision application and a site plan special exception application for, uh, the Farrell properties. It's for the mini storage facility. Uh, we had previous, we did the CEPR on this, but we previously deemed the applications incomplete. They finally came with the health department. My, uh, it, this resolu, this says Farrell Butter Lane for the subdivision, but this is going to be a hearing on the subdivision and the site plan special exception. So, so I was just going to recommend that we deem the applications complete and schedule the hearing for April 11th. This will be our fourth hearing and the last hearing for the 11th.
And it's a combined?
It's a combined, yeah.
Right. Okay. Motion by George, second by Gloria, all in favor. Opposed extensions, five in favor, two absent. 20, 74 Priscilla Avenue?
Yep, um, I did a bunch of subdivisions on Priscilla Avenue. This is, uh, we did a pre-application for a two-lot subdivision. Um, you can see most of the lots in this area are half the size, so it was previously two lots. So it's down the middle. They were successful with the zoning board, uh, but their pre-app has expired, and they're just getting their health department now. So, um, we were just going to do an extension of the pre-app until June 9th, 2024.
Extension of the pre-app to June?
June 9th, 2024. Yep.
Okay. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Craig, all in favor. Opposed extensions, five in favor, two absent. Um, Eastport Bible Church?
Yep, um, by. Yep, I took this over, but this is the one where they're building a new community center building.
Oh, yes, yes.
And so, we did the coordination, nobody, the secret coordination, no one responded. So, this action is just for the planning board to establish themselves as lead agency, and we'll do a secret at a future meeting.
Okay, so this is for lead agency?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Craig, all in favor.
Hi. Anthony, the previous application, what date did you put that to?
June ninth.
June ninth is Sunday.
That's, that's okay. These are, they're just the.
Oh, yeah, the extension.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can you make it? I don't know, Zoom, maybe?
So, the Eastport Bible Church?
Just lead agency.
Lead agency?
We did it. We did it.
I didn't take a vote?
Yes, we did.
I did? You moved it, who seconded it?
I seconded it.
We're all in favor.
Five, five in favor, two absent.
I have a question after we finish the vote.
Okay. Confuse me, George.
Just trying to keep you on your toes.
I'm way up at all the times. Twenty-three Burke?
That's off the agenda.
What was that?
That's the affordable housing development up there, the Burke property over on Newyork Road in Newyork. There's the existing house in the back, and they're doing the.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
We were doing the secret, trying to get movement here, but I need the archaeology on that one, so.
Okay.
So, we just have to pull it for now.
Okay.
So, I think you're done.
Sign plant, I want to.
No, we just did Terese.
That was signed, right? That's a signed acknowledgement of a plant?
We acknowledged that before.
Twenty-five is the acknowledgement of the pad construction?
That's off, nope.
Yeah.
You signed it there?
No.
No, no, that's off.
Pad and cap four is off the agenda.
They're both off. Okay, so twenty-five, twenty-six are both off.
And then I just have, real quick, Jackie, if I may, just.
You adding on, Anthony?
This is, this is super fast.
This is super fast, here, I'll show you.
Twenty-nine, okay.
This was a right-to-build that we approved in October for Joe Gaza. I'll put it up here. This will be the new agenda item. Ocean View Park, Part Four, Suffolk County tax map, nine hundred dash six dash sixty-three dash four dash nine, and it's a right-to-build request, which we already approved. I'm just fixing the resolution because I forgot that I treated this like it was an actual subdivision and not a right-to-build. In the resolves, we have the town board acceptance of certain documents, a road widening, construction easement, and a conservation easement. I'm just switching these to say the submission of the offer of dedication, which we have, submission of the temporary construction easement, and town board acceptance of the conservation easements, which we have, are being reviewed. Who knows how long the town board will take, and who knows if they'll ever do it? So, it was just submission of those documents that we have.
So, what was the original date that we approved this?
October.
Of 2023?
Yeah. So, we're just making that revision, that the legal documents, it's not acceptance of, it's submission of the documents.
Where is this?
This is up in, I'll show you.
Just for nosiness sake.
No, no, it's not nosy, that's good. Nine hundred, sixty-three, four. Okay, hold on one second. Did I get that right? No, I got that completely wrong. Hold on.
It should say what Hamilton.
This is part of a, it's this lot here, this whole development section was opened by the planning board.
What Hamilton?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is Watermill Tow Road, and it is in, obviously, that one.
Watermill.
Yeah, Watermill. But this was, this is one that the board.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it was just to change it for the submission of those legal documents, which we do have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion?
Yep, to amend that resolution.
And that document?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor. Opposed extensions, five in favor, two absent. Anthony, you are done. Anthony, I just ask you a question about, is one more current than the other of these?
Yeah.
No, I don't want to give you what you don't want, though.
Claire?
The black one is more current?
Who's doing the pearl on the?
Okay, it incorporates this, yeah.
The town board of the, on the urban renewal plan that is, she's out there. She didn't know she, I think she was on the journey. Let me see if I can.
Okay, Claire, it's the Claire Shea Show.
Yes. We've got backups now, so, great.
Okay, so you're number two, Broda.
Passing this down.
Two-on-two Little Newyork Pad.
Yeah, so we discussed this application, and I have a date in here. I think it was December, uh, December fourteenth, yes, as a waiver to the project. What it is, is this lot is being divided into two lots. One is going to be purchased by the CPF funds, and so the details of that would just been marked out.
Is this that funny access?
Funny access, exactly. We'll pull that on the arrow.
Okay, so we have a mess open.
I'm sorry, and then.
So, the open space lot is what the town is buying?
Yep. Kevin, I think Steve Keighley has been waiting to come in, if you could get him in?
Hello, ma'am. So, this is the lot in question. They own the parcel to this point. They own this parcel and this right-of-way here? So, they control both?
Which is that parcel? I'm sorry, Claire.
This is the large parcel. Can you see that on the area?
Yeah, the town is buying that?
Well, part of it, and that, on that plan shows that a portion that's adjacent to the west, that portion is adjacent to the western, which is the town-owned open space, will be held by the town of Southampton as a larger open space parcel. So, and then they also own this right-of-way right here, so they control both of those things.
So, they can come in there?
Mm-hmm.
And then how do they get down?
So, in this case, the applicant will retain ownership of twenty feet of that twenty-five foot right-of-way, five feet will be the town's, and there will be a further five-foot easement over the applicant's parcel for complete access to the property, so for trail purposes and such.
So, what's the rationale for the town buying this in the middle to resolve a?
I can answer that.
Yeah. Please identify yourself with the record.
Yes, Stephen Keighley, the applicant. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, I'm Mr. Blue. So, this is one part of an extensive greenway owned by the town, so it's going to complete the aggregation of an extensive trail. So, this would be the entrance or the Little Newyork Pad to the trail. So, right now, it's a landlocked, and this would allow people to traverse the entire piece.
Can you show us that, Claire? Can you show us the, where the trail continues?
Yeah, I think it can do as an easement, so let me just see.
Well, there's this open space, and then there's the conservation easement, they're two separate?
Correct, so there's open space, and to the rear of the property, there was easements, and that easement adjoins town-owned property. And then that goes towards, if I have, wait.
Actually, I think this helps a lot, so you can see, there's the, there's actually an easement now to the effect, but there is an easement to the, on this parcel to the west already, and then it's town open space, and then further easements on these adjacent lots.
They exist?
So, there's a lot of connection opportunities there for trails.
Yeah, yeah, so it's almost locked to the west or town-owned. So, the easement to the rear of the property on the south lot, it joins town of Southampton property, which joins more Southampton property. So, to access that, you necessarily need to traverse our cliff and pole to get back to it. So, we're willing to create more open space for the trail, which is quite large. You know, it's going to be one hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and one square feet, that's, you know, because our total lot size is three hundred thousand five hundred and sixty-four. So, our hole is twenty-five feet. So, we were going to change it from us, because originally, we proposed us retaining fifteen feet and the town having ten feet. And last time I was here in December, the planning board requested that we enlarge our hole for interest in the west to twenty and have five-foot for the trail. However, there'll be another five-foot easement onto our twenty-foot hole for vehicular traffic in case of emergency, things like that. But typically, the people are going to be walking on that five-foot easement pad to the rear of the property.
Has council seen all these easements?
I have, this has been going on for.
For some time.
Like a couple of years.
Yeah, this has been going on for several years, Madam Chair.
So, basically, I've made three findings. They are a summary of the fact that this is a waiver provision of your subdivision. If they meet these requirements, the three findings that I've stated, then they are eligible for the waiver. And that would be, you know, there's no review for the subdivision in this case, they can do it, but at the end of the day, you will be, the secretary will be signing a map that will be filed with the county center.
So, what is our action, Claire, just Claire?
A waiver under three thirty dash, I'm sorry, I'm always three thirty, two ninety-two dash forty-four. And I, so I state that, that's in the second paragraph, that's the entire part of the code.
Two ninety-two, so the planning board shall waiver, they'll waive the, can you just read that into the record for us?
Of course, yeah.
Yeah.
Says, "The planning board shall waive the subdivision application process and fees for a subdivision or re-subdivision creating no more than two lots, inclusive the lot to be donated or acquired, which conform to zoning or have received the requisite variances where one lot is donated to or acquired by the town, county," goes on. "Such open space shall be in conformance with two forty-nine, forty-seven of the general municipal law and Southampton Town Code two forty-seven. Nothing herein shall be deemed to exempt such subdivision or re-subdivision from approval from the planning board, Suffolk County Department of Health Services, or any other entity with approval authority. The results in subdivision or re-subdivision map shall be duly recorded with the Suffolk County Clerk's Office."
That's the language of the statute, right?
It is, and therefore, based on that, I've had three findings.
And they are?
One is that there's no more than two lots being created, and that's just shown as the map that you have in front of you. Secondly, that the CPF manager, Jacqueline Fendlin, has indicated the second lot will be acquired through the Community Preservation Fund, subject to the five-foot easement over the twenty-foot flag strip for the build of the lot. The lot labeled as open space will be acquired for open space purposes. And number three is the lots conform to zoning.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Just for the record, we already had the public hearing in front of the town to acquire, however, it's conditioned upon this waiver. So, once I get the waiver, then an acquisition resolution will be issued, and we convert to, we have the subdivision map signed, and then we'll be set to closing. So, this has been reviewed by the CPF and the town board as a great piece of property to acquire.
No reference to the town in this at all? Do you need to?
The town board public hearing, I could say that there was town board public hearing on it. I could definitely say that.
Yeah, I mean, if Jackie's saying that they're going to do it, that would presume a public hearing where they approved it, but.
Yeah, I would put that down, Claire.
Yeah, and I can put the date in there.
Yeah.
Yep.
It will be under number two, but otherwise, I suggest that you adopt the waiver.
So, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor. Opposed extensions, five in favor, two absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, going to go in order? Three is off, four with a signature. Claire, you're Southampton Dog. You're done, Prender. You want to go now, Seth?
The applicant's here on Southampton Dog.
Yeah, South, the applicant is here for Dog?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, let's do the Southampton Dog, and then we'll go back.
And then we'll come back, and then maybe you could find her in the meantime.
Yeah, sounds great.
Do you want him to come out?
Sure.
Where's the doggy?
Matthew Grabowski from Southampton Dog.
So, what I proposed today is that we go over the staff report and the conditions of approval. If you have any significant questions, the deadline's not till the next meeting, but I think you've looked at this a couple of times, so.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, I think they've got a good project going on here.
This is the staff report decision, I think we have.
Okay.
And then these are the referrals, I forgot to put them in the packet. This is the appearance, they're, right now, they've got the green building, and they're going to do that as part of phase one.
But we see on here, wait a minute, that there's a puppy, we removed this, this puppy play yard.
Oh, I thought there was a discussion at the public hearing.
No, we're going to move it to the back, nothing in the front. We were very clear about that, very clear.
Okay.
Yeah.
That wasn't his understanding, so I'm only, you know, goodbye to that, so.
I saw that puppy right away, and I'm like, no, no, no.
No puppies.
We were concerned about.
Yeah.
Traffic.
Distraction.
Yeah.
But if I may mention, there's, there is a, there's so much vegetation in front, I actually took a picture of that, and the entire area is, looks like that, and I think we.
Yeah, but still, it's, we were really not comfortable with the front play yard, yeah. And you have space in the back, so.
Well, they're going to have to get some type of variance for the back if they want the full area.
Well, they have an area indicated, no?
Couple of other play yards back there, is it for smaller dogs and bigger dogs, or?
Yes, but we would need, in the, in the next phase, we would need much more, this is, this is a very tiny space for now, for dogs.
But Claire, I'm surprised the notes that were taken at that public meeting did not reflect that, because we were very clear about that. Does everybody remember that, not having the play stuff in the front?
I know, we thought it would be better if they were away from the road.
Yeah.
So, are there two play areas, do you have one?
Yeah, I have one.
You have one? Okay. Looks like there's two play areas in the back and one in the front, is that kind of what?
Yes, yes.
So, it's the one in the front that we eliminated, yeah, this?
Right. The play area in the back comes to just a few feet, it's very tiny and very narrow. But.
But do you have parking, what else do you have back there?
Nothing, I mean.
Yeah, you can expand them, right?
So, right.
It's all paved there, right?
It's all paved, yes. We would like to put, though, like, fake grass.
Yeah.
True.
But they could do that, Claire, they could expand it in the back.
Okay, yeah, and you were supportive of that, but any further than the fifty feet would need a variance?
Anything further than what?
Into the fifty feet setback.
So, there's another five feet.
We don't know what his dimension is here. This is the mention he's talking about here.
So, that's fifty.
So, the ideal.
That conforms to the fifty.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. So, he would need a variance, which I think you'd be supportive of.
Very supportive of it.
Um, but he has to go, he wants to get open, so he's doing phase one conforming, and then phase two would be that variance for that, yeah.
Fine, we could do it in phases, yeah.
Great.
Is it possible to use the two that are in the back now, and then go through the process to try to get a variance to move that to the back?
Oh, you mean allow him to have the small area in the front?
No, no.
No, no. Kinda start with the two small ones while working on the larger one in the front.
I've eliminated, moving, making this-
We need the variance, Tom, because it's a fifty-foot setback, and he would approach on that. So, we would support, probably come to here, you know?
Right, yeah, eliminate that.
I have one of what he wants, which I think-
I have, I have one here.
Yeah, we have copies of that. I have additional copies, too. This would be-
Yeah, that's the phase two.
Yeah, that's what he wanted, yeah.
This would be the larger one.
Right.
But, but you still have this up here, so you'll have to take that off the map.
So, anything in the front there, in the front yard, yeah, is, you think is distracting?
It's dangerous.
Yeah, yeah.
And that is a very busy intersection.
And, as well as this area here.
That's, to me, is not as bad. It's just that front corner.
So, here, we will have these, what we will call, like, big suites for bigger dogs, or people who really want big room for their dogs, and we wanted to do here, like, a little yard for them.
Yeah, it's just really the corner piece.
Just this corner?
Yeah.
So, the one on the side that's facing more David Voice, I mean, this part?
This little one is probably on.
Okay.
And then, just one question, here, we want to do a catch pen in front, I don't know if you can see it, in front of the main entrance, so that the dogs are safe, and in case somebody drops the leash from-
He's talking about, like, a double fencing? So, it's not like the dog will be there, it will just be that double fence, you'd have to open one fence, close it, and then go through another fence.
Yeah, but that's, that's, that's safety for the, for the dog and the road.
Yeah, so he's gonna show that on the plan, too, which makes sense.
That makes sense.
Great, okay.
Okay, so you'll just take this off?
Yes.
And we would support a variance, right?
Okay, good.
We can get started with a smaller area.
Yeah, sure.
Right, and then next.
The one on the, on the side, the smaller one, and then the two blocks.
And these two.
And then when he gets the variance, he just put the grass down and-
Right. But do you want us to keep that decorative split rail, or that also goes?
Oh, I don't know. Is it just for decoration, or it's?
So, if it's for decoration, it's only the, the split rail, if it's for function, there would be a mesh in the back.
Yeah, it's no function.
No function, so.
I think the split rail, so do we want that, or?
Well, not.
What would be there if we, all right, would there be?
Nothing, there would be nothing.
So, we don't need it.
That would be just pure decorative reason, because this would-
I think you have the greenery in front, and that's probably sufficient.
All right. So, I remove everything.
I'm sorry, where, where is the ZBA relief required here?
Do you see the, do you see the two plans? I wanna show you the two options. I think, I don't know what you've got.
You see, it's a much deeper back area. It's a fifty-foot setback.
No.
Ah, yeah, 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 I got you, okay.
Oh, yeah, that's the deeper one. This is the variance one.
Yeah.
Yes, we'll eliminate that.
I don't think the puppies would like that front area anyway, because there'd be too much exhaust.
Oh, it's terrible, crazy.
I mean, they would much prefer the back, that's for sure, it's just, it's very tiny at this.
I think it's safer for the puppies and for people.
Yes.
Okay, so what's our action here, Claire?
Um, do you mind looking quickly through the staff report? I'll make the adjustments. Um, I think it's pretty easy, we'll just eliminate the front parking, I'm sorry, the fronts, um, fancy space.
The fencing, we can eliminate the outdoor area in the front, eliminate the fencing, approve the double, what do you call that?
Vestibule or catch pen?
Yeah.
Vestibule, yeah, I think that's good. And then, yeah, I mean, I can just go through the resolution, if that's good with you?
If I just made, there will be, actually, for safety, there will be three small vestibules at each of that entry, but the only point where dogs can-
Get out.
Get out, so, just a small one, if, and if it's, if it's okay, it'll be here, here, and here, it will be just four feet tall, a little-
For their safety.
A little gate.
A little gate.
Makes complete sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely. That's great.
Okay, so.
If that's a problem, we can also put this and this one inside, indoors, but-
They're good with it outside.
I think we're good with it.
They're good.
No, it's great. Okay, good. So, um, so if you wanna go to the last page of the packet, I have some conditions. They are amenable to the two chargers in the parking lots for electrical vehicles. And then submit plans that show the phase one, obviously, the phase one's not gonna, now gonna have no, nothing in the fronts, and the fencing eliminated, so I'll make those two references. And then there'd be phase two, which is that variance relief in the back that we're talking about, okay?
Okay.
And then, lines with public safety comments.
So, you have the changes to the site plan, right?
Right. Mm-hmm, it's gonna be to eliminate the, the area in the front, so it can be eliminated the fencing, and to add the vestibule.
The area in the front, the play area in the front. Increase the back.
Well, that's phase two. The increase the back is phase two, because you're gonna have to bless it after the ZBA grants their variance.
So, we can't do that now?
No, we can't do that.
All right.
Well, we're gonna have a plan that's in our file for when he comes back, and hopefully a couple of months, that you'll be able to amend and make it your second site plan. It'll include the color change, too, the building will remain green for now, but that'll be part of phase two, that turns that to the barn red, which I think everyone might love the building, so. Compliance with the public safety comments, compliance with the town engineer comments, all lighting mounted on poles on the building should be mounted no more than ten foot above grade. Note the dumpster to be enclosed and landscaped pursuant to code. Our typical conditions related to screening of HVAC systems, no installation of dusted lawn lining fixtures, and the proposed line should be shielded.
Do we have a lighting plan?
Uh, no, they don't propose any changes now, this is my, my typical conditions related to any lighting. They might put additional lighting outside, and then you, you could, wanna review that?
We have no plan.
There was only these lights here on top of that sign.
Right.
And no other lighting?
No.
Okay.
No, that is fine.
So, we should request, at set phase two, we should get a lighting plan?
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, you don't have any lighting for the play areas, 'cause they're not gonna be out there at night?
No.
Okay.
Claire, I'm looking at the Department of Health letter.
Yeah.
And they, they haven't received an application, and they haven't approved anything, and that's not in your resolution.
Yeah, so what do you want to do, I know this came up on another application that we have for the, for vet services.
Yeah.
They've been now informed that they have to get Health Department approval, and that would be always subject to prior to them submitting a building permit, they need that.
But shouldn't that be in the-
It should be in the-
We can have that as a condition.
Yes.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, 'cause that was, I had that comment for both of these applications, Health Department.
So, do you put it under general conditions, or?
You know what, I'm gonna add another one.
Under where?
Prior to, uh-
Under J.
Building permit being issued, that's typical, yeah.
So, where would it be, but A, B, C?
I'm going to make it a prior to building permits, secure Health Department approval.
Yeah, I mean, this applicant, this Health Department says, "The applicant therefore should not undertake the project without the Health Department approval. Density design and flow specifications, location, subsurface soil conditions, and complete site plan details are essential for them to review the project." So, that's a pretty, somewhat onerous statement.
Yes, they say that, they're saying that they need it.
I do, I do. So, I, I already started conversation with the Health Department, and there is a law there that says that when we board, or if we have a veterinarian, we have to, there is something that we have to comply, but that applies to boarding, but we could start with training only, we could not board if we don't meet that-
Health Department, right.
Yes, but for, for training is-
So, for daycare and training.
It's fine, but we could not stand, or if we comply with whatever septic system we have, it would be certain amount of dogs, which probably is under what we want, but that I will learn from them soon, but I'm, we are assuming we will not be able to board them initially, so.
You, you are forward, unfortunately.
Yes, and I actually mentioned it in the staff report also. Yep. Okay?
Yeah.
Great. I'm ready, if you are.
So, what's our action? We're approving this-
Conditional approval for the, the application, for the kennel use, and it's gonna have those additional changes for those three changes to the site plan, and also the additional condition that prior to issues of building permit, they need Health Department approval.
Okay.
Okay, so our motion is to accept the report.
Motion?
Motion by Gloria.
Second.
Second by Craig, all in favor.
Aye.
Post-extensions, five in favor, two absent.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Seth?
Bye-bye.
Thanks.
Number five, Wade Center for Veterinary Emergencies, one forty-four.
I'd like to invite Lisa Boye for the applicant to sit down, and I will present you with a draft resolution, a revised staff report.
Thank you.
And some information that Lisa has been kind enough to offer to the Planning Division.
Thank you.
May I remind you, we're talking about the Wade Center for Veterinary Emergencies, at ten fifty-four Montauk Highway in Waterville. This is a site plan special exception for a sixty, sixty thousand square foot parcel with three usages at this, at this time, a cell phone tower in the back, special trade contractor storage, and up front is a thirty-seven hundred square foot metal retail, what was a retail building, that's going to be converted to a veterinary emergency center. There were some issues that the, the board brought up at the last, sorry, I haven't gotten to the area at all yet, at the last meeting, that we needed to see, I needed to seek some clarity on some of the codes for veterinary services, as they are not stipulated in Town Code nor Suffolk Code. So, I got in touch with the state, and it turns out there's some, there are some regulations that the, the state promulgates, and the crux of it comes with, from how they regulate the veterinary profession. So, Lisa was kind enough to present to the Planning Division a letter from Dr. Bressler, explaining her, how she is in good stead with the veterinaries as a, as a vet. I have put that in the resolution as two of the key points for the codes that would regulate that, that certain type of business, as, I seem to have lost, sorry, one moment. Yeah, the, the housing of animals, again, citing Title X, Article fifty-five of New York Code, and the licensing requirements, as well as the Animal Welfare Act, which is a federal And another thing that the, the board pointed out was what would become of the cadavers, which is part of the special exception standards that we need to meet, and again, Lisa pointed out that Dr. Bressler has a standing contract with Rhino Gift Prematorium, I believe was, is the name, so cadavers will be dealt with appropriately, so that should alleviate that And then, there were some, some other issues on the future cross-access, which we've hammered out, we've come to an agreement, I included in the packet, or what I just handed you, a, an aerial of a draft, a drafted potential cross-access for your review. And the applicant also has taken the time to address the septic system and the flow, which came up at our prior meeting, the, the retail flow of point four, I believe, for the thirty, thirty-seven hundred square feet, I don't have the figures in front of me, and I'm not that fast with numbers. At any rate, the, the new flow is point one gallons per day at the square footage, and I guess we want to make that a, I need to move that up to as a condition of before a building permit is issued, so that would be a change to the resolution I have put in front of you, so something similar to what we just dealt with.
Yep.
Okay, so I can make that happen. So, at that point, if you have any questions for the applicant or myself, those were the key issues that we, you had asked me to cover.
I mean, we've not seen this, so you just wanna scan this, or go through it?
Oh, I shall, certainly.
Maybe the conditions of-
Go to the conditions.
...the staff report at the last meeting, if I remember correctly.
Yes. I just bringing out the, the questions that were, arose from the, the previous meeting, for the sake of time, not to go through the entire staff report again, so if, if you would like, I could go to the conditions of the resolution.
That's the letter from the vet, right? Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, we have resolved that the conditions of, to accept this application would be a revised site plan to indicate the future cross-access, which I have brought before the board, then the general conditions, the installation of the, and use of dusted lawn lighting fixtures, on or off premises, premises, excuse me, and use to illuminate the subject partial should not be permitted. Again, there are no changes to the exterior of the building proposed under this site plan.
Do we have an indication of lighting, lighting plan? Did you submit anything?
No, there's no changes to the lighting from the building.
So, the existing lighting?
Correct. And we understand that the sign will come back to you as a separate application as well.
So, that alludes to two B, which is no additional lighting on the property without planning board approval, they shall be shielded, and pointing downward.
Well, we're talking about existing lighting.
Yes.
So, Claire, so what's, we're talking about existing lighting, and he's got three items.
Well, this site plan went through extensive site plan reviews, so.
I know, I'm not saying that, we should just say, lighting is-
Is existing, and shorten it up.
Is existing and approved, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Very good, I can reflect that. Signage on the site, similar circumstance, they need, are required to be permitted, permitted, if they are not permitted, they need to be in compliance.
Well, it has to come back, it has to come back to this board, any signage.
Then it has to come back to this board. Compliance with the, the requirements of the Department of Public Safety and Fire Prevention, which were stipulated in the staff report, they were the standard issue requirements that we see quite often. The items to be submitted as conditions of approval, again, the future cross-access, and then we have the standard, shall file the notarized affidavit, affidavit, that's indicating compliance with the conditions of the site approval plan, and if I may skip to the, the last point, which is something that was holding over from a, a prior usage on the site, which was the fact that Homeland Towers had never been issued a certificate of occupancy, and that we will make that a condition of a certificate of occupancy for the Wade Center, is that there is one in place for Homeland Towers.
And then you have to add the Health Department's-
Yes.
Approval prior to building permit.
Yes. So, at this point, with those revisions in mind.
Lisa, you have any questions?
No, no comments, please, thank you.
Is everybody comfortable with this?
Yeah.
So, we move to adopt it? Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Craig, all in favor.
Aye.
Post-extensions, five in favor, two absent.
Great, thank you.
Have a good evening. See you in a little bit.
See you. Are you back?
Yes.
So, Claire, you have Sandy, twenty-five Sandy Hollow?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is an existing site, it is the former transmission place that Sandy Hollow built, it used to have a transmission, transmission man on the, made out of metal.
I thought it was a, a snowman.
Was it a snowman? I think it was a snowman, too, at one point. Yes, so, he sold it, and there's a special trade contractor use proposed for the project, I think the landscaper, and so this is the pre-submission prior to the site plan, and
And I have reports for you.
And I think Wayne Brown was going to come on, on Kevin, do you want to check these there?
I think big issues on this one, because the buildings are existing. Might be, A, kind of the cluttering of these, these buildings that they have proposed to remain on the property and also the buffers. There's existing houses here, they are proposing a fifty-foot buffer in this location. These are like cottages on this side and they're not proposing any additional buffer on that side, but maybe want to establish some kind of like at least ten feet or something on that west side. These are existing buffers too, but this is a special exception. And also maybe the buffers in the fronts, they're pretty landscaped and it is a landscaping company, so I'm sure we get more plans.
One would hope so.
Yes. So we could talk about the buffers, I just wanted some guidance from you on that. Kevin, did Wayne Brown come in?
He's joining right now.
Thank you. Do you want to just get over, go over and then we'll have the applicant speak? Does that sound good?
Yeah, keep going.
Okay, so it's, it is a site plan special exception, it's the highway business zoning district. It is on listed action. It is an application to change the use from an auto radio repair shop to a special trade contractor, landscape contractor on a two-acre parcel. New York State archaeological sensitive area, 25 Sandy Hollow Road. A pre-submission conference was held on January 25th and when there was no comments during the pre-submission conference nor during the thirty-day written comment period. Actually, what I didn't point out was the New York State archaeologically sensitive area. We should probably mention that. Do you think that, because there's no buildings being built?
Disturbed site.
Okay, so it doesn't make sense to have an archaeological on this one. Okay. I want to make sure if we point that out under SECR. So landscaping and clearing, the site plan indicates existing rows of pine trees along Sandy Hollow Road, along the inside fence adjacent to the northern property line. No proposed landscaping is indicated on the site plan. I don't know what that means.
Is that a paved area or is that a dirt center area?
This is, looks like a paved area, doesn't it? Or maybe McCattan, maybe it's RCA.
And a landscaper is coming in?
Yes.
So is there going to be that kind of disturbance, I mean, to tear that up and? Do we have a?
Well, he has it shown as a gravel. Well, this is a pre-submission, so we should ask for a landscaping plan.
Yes, a proposed landscaping, yeah, exactly. They're showing these sustained on the site plan, but yes, I think some proposed landscaping is in order.
Because they've got twenty-four stalls indicated here along the, Claire.
Yep.
Along this western line, we want that to be buffered.
Which is where those cottages are that come in off of the corner.
Yeah.
I think they, I think they have some room to establish at least a setback there of something.
We should have some foliage, I mean, because it's going to be an unattractive site. They've got trucks, you know, a lot of these landscaping sites really become unsightly.
Yeah, they're showing some of their storage, but that growth is over time, that's why we, you should control it. So what do you think about the setback to the west? They're showing twenty feet, but then it gets down to even less than that, maybe six? So maybe at least a ten-foot on the west, or you think more, but planted?
Yeah, planted, yeah. Twenty?
Yeah, at least twenty.
And then along the front, right?
Well, along the north side, because there's houses there and then some attractive landscaping on the Sandy Hollow Road side. I mean, they're a landscaping company, they should make, make it look nice from the road.
Right, my sense is landscaping is going to be trucks and equipment and moving stuff and probably not a lot of material.
They specify evergreen landscaping.
Yes, evergreen.
Great giants.
Okay, I can definitely do that. And then my next thing is the outdoor storage trailers, there's six of them. And then the office storage trailer. Maybe that one that's in the fifteen, the twenty-foot buffer, you want to relocate that to line up with the other trailers to the north, if they need it? The one, because the state's storage trailer to the west.
Well, this one, move this guy up there?
Yeah, yeah, move it up there. That way it gets away from the neighbors.
And Claire, for the, with those trailers, do we have to think about what they're storing? Fertilizers, pesticides, stuff like that?
That's a good point, yeah.
I don't know what the regulations on that are.
Yeah, I mean, we just had that Bartlett tree up the road where they were, they have to put special trailers in.
So you're going to ask that, Claire?
Yeah, what is being stored in trailers, if pesticides, then?
Fertilizers, I don't know what.
Yep.
Hi Wayne.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah, clear as day.
Great. Hey Claire, do you have an aerial photograph?
It's up, you don't, you don't see it on your version?
I do, I do not see it, but I just want the board to know along the west line is somewhat of a berm and also pine already there. So we'll certainly take into account what your suggestion and making a consistent setback for parking activities and if necessary augment that there, but we'll provide you with pictures so you understand what is exactly there as well.
Good.
Okay.
And pines are tricky now, Wayne, with the pine beetle.
These pines have been there for several years, I would guess twenty to thirty years now.
That's the ones that are getting eaten, unfortunately.
Okay, and you understand about the fertilizer pesticides, we'd want that information?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I'll move on to the special exception use, it is, it's the general special exception use. Obviously drainage structures, there's going to be some town engineer review here. So are you okay with the, it looks like it's gravel parking area, that dark area? And that the only pavement is the area that's kind of east of the building in that parking lot?
The intent here was with the prior use, including where the snowman was. The paving and areas where the public would actually come and maybe meet at the office, so to speak, in the building was only that paved area in front. The remaining portion are all the remaining gravel, as they currently are.
Do we have to be, excuse me, be concerned at all about the prior use, that there's some residue of things in the grounds?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I understand was studied and that there is none, but we can certainly look into them.
So, I'm sorry, I'm like blanking, but it's an environmental assessment.
I was having a hard time articulating my concern.
But that would be a good, yeah, because that is secret, so I want to put that into a secret too.
And they're not planning retail sales out of here, right?
No.
No. And then actually related to access, I see there's a couple curb cuts.
I see, you just saw them, there's like three, like three accesses, right?
The county, you don't like that?
It's existing, that's the way it's been for the last thirty years. County, when they did all the work there, recognized that.
Okay, well, it's going to be a referral to the county, so see what happens. They may change their mind, yeah. So next is SECR and then I'll put down the, that there's no need for the archaeological review because it's a disturbed site and then mention the environmental assessment. Existing proposed buffers, I think we talked about that a little bit. The front buffer seems pretty green, so you sufficient with that, with the existing? Maybe look at some augmenting, augmenting of that?
Along the road?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't drive that that often, but my perception from past is that there's not much there, it seems like. It's pretty open.
The opening is wide in the front, that's why, because I drive entrance.
Yeah, the pines on the southerly side, until you get to that south entrance are pretty heavy. It's not until you get to the entrance area, that front paving area that it's opened up.
And that's the main entrance, right?
Yes, like three entrances combined to one.
Circulation is, you go in over the north access and around and come out on the south side, except for the front parking where you have two or three stalls.
And along the road on the northern end looks pretty heavily grown.
Yeah, this continues with the berm and the pines as well.
Okay, and then fencing, they have some fencing that goes on to the neighbor's property, so I don't know if I'm sure what type of fencing that is, so if you can note it. And probably you'd want that buffer to the west and north just to be, have like a low fenced delineated, yeah, okay.
Wayne, what is to the west of this? I mean, we didn't get any public comments, but I'm just.
Cottages.
To the west, it is a place called Willow Square, which is a small cottage complex. I think their CO is, is like a resort motel. I think people occupy that more on a lengthier rental period than a transient situation. But it is all zone highway business, so at some point in the future, I could totally change.
Right.
I remember a couple of years ago, you approved this barn, that storage barn, if you remember that?
Just a couple more items I had, the architecture, obviously they're not proposing to change anything, but maybe use a fresh coat of paint or something, suggest that?
We don't have photographs.
Yeah, not really.
Or put up a lot of trees so you can't see it.
Well, the building is, is right in front of the parking, so there's not much you can do like that. We can take a peek at that. The dumpster, of course, parking.
Where is the dumpster?
They're going to have to provide it, the location.
There is one shown existing, it's near the south entrance.
Do you have it?
In the parking, the south entrance, where the vehicles.
Where's the south entrance?
So there's another entrance, this entrance of these spots here, it's like, so they come in and they come around this way. This is, I'll give you to save this, yes, real close box.
Is that sufficient, that dumpster?
That's an existing situation, so we can look at that and if you have concerns, we can relocate it.
Okay.
Parking, they, they are generating about thirty-eight spaces and they're providing forty-five, so they're meeting their parking requirement.
And I do appreciate that the truck parking is actually shown larger spaces, which is something we don't see very often.
Now, I know.
Yes.
That's correct. I'll mention that. And then I don't know if they need sanitary, do you know, Wayne? If they need health department approval?
The use, the use from a health department standpoint is not changing, so we'll look into that there. See if it can be required.
Okay, and then the typical mechanicals and lighting, they're showing the lighting on the plans as existing. I'm just going to double check that conforming before we go on to the next thing.
Well, there is one big note that you should like, on the pole that is just on the southeast corner of the building, there is an existing, that's the dawn light fixture, which is indicated to be removed.
I like that, that's great.
It's not a LIPA pole allowed, is it, or it's theirs?
It was prior on.
It's not a town street light.
No. There's a lot of changes here. Wayne, you okay with me just tightening this up and stopping next, next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, just wording, just speaking the wording right for you.
Oh, yeah, too much change.
That's perfect, great, we'll have it for the next month. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thanks.
Thanks, Wayne.
157 West Montauk Highway, Claire?
As a distribution, I'm going to give it to you right this second.
This is for action in two weeks?
Yes. She's in. T-Mobile. Kevin, I think there's someone on, Brian Felton?
Who are we, are we waiting, Claire, for something?
I can start to talk about, but look, Brian Felton's coming on, so he's the applicant representative. This is pretty straightforward. This is an application, when existing cell tower has more than seven, I'm sorry, six antennas placed on it, it needs planning board approval, same kind of approval. So this is actually a site you looked at for addition for AT&amp;T a couple of weeks ago. Yeah, you want to just, yeah, these are the details.
Right here.
Same thing?
Yeah, it's all, I think it's all the same thing. And we can shift, yeah, yeah, we'll move, yeah.
And then you said that this is the resolution for you.
Now, where was this, Claire?
This is.
Great Hollow Road?
What, I thought we were doing 157 West Montauk.
Oh, that was just a fusion, no action. That's just for your.
For review.
Yep, for your review over the next two weeks, there will homework to do.
Distribute and read.
And then we'll go over on the plan.
I had a note that there was nothing in the file, did you send something separately?
This, I'm just distributing it to you this second.
Oh, okay.
And it will be in the packet.
I'm sorry, I was just, I was too busy looking for my clothes for dinner.
Lots of paperwork, lots of paperwork, I know, exactly.
You gave us homework?
Yes, I gave you homework to do. That's an important site, I wanted you to have it ahead of time before we discussed it. That's the Hampton Base Tower. This is pretty straightforward, this is the additional of nine panel antennas. T-Mobile is currently not on this cell tower and they're adding nine. If they had six, they would be exempt, they'd be going for just a building permit, but they need the nine for service. They are not internal, the whole, the whole tower is not internal. Nobody has internal on the tower.
Georgia old.
It's a known tower.
And I'm hoping that it will help the cellphone service at my house.
Yes, yes, exactly. But Brian Felton, right, is here for the applicant's representative?
I'm here.
Yes. So if you have any questions, but this is pretty straightforward, we've done a couple of these. We've done one, as I said, just two months ago to add, actually, in my case, I think it's two antennas. And this is, this is nine in this case. In this case, I have one condition that they submit the plans for signature in this case, so.
But Claire, I would like to see a plan, I mean, cell towers have changed, their cell towers have gone up so they should provide us with a schematic of where the closest is to where they are? And any new, and the length of the. The distance between the two for service, and we haven't had that on this.
Site plans, you don't, and special exceptions, all that is required, you know, as we go through a full review. But a site plan is considered type two action, because it's an existing structure. By federal law, we have a very tight timeframe, once they submit something to us, we have to act.
A part of our master code for cell towers requires that, so.
For special exception uses, but for site plan uses, the code specifically says, if you want more than six antennas, you're entitled to that, but you have to come to you, but then you're very limited in what you can do, you can't be asking, I mean, there, information's there. If we wanted to look at the information, I could provide that to you.
Yeah, okay, as long as you can provide it, that's great.
But, but again, this is supposed to be an expedited process for you. Double checking things like the sites in conformance, like if clearing, we needed the clearing to be double checked or something. That's in your purview as a site plan review.
Are they changing the base?
They are, this is something that unfortunately, unfortunately, the previous person double checked and yes, they're way in conformance with their clearing in this case, they provided a survey already.
So maybe you can let us know.
Yeah.
What coverage there is in this area.
We could definitely let you know.
Appease people like Gloria.
I know, she needs coverage.
You're talking about a map of all the cell towers?
Yeah, this is, this is what's, you know, it's in our code, but Claire's saying we can't ask. Yeah, this is, this is what's, you know, it's, it's in our code, but Claire's saying we can't ask for it.
Yeah. Not in this case. This is a site plan. This is very.
But we have it somewhere.
Yes, we definitely have that somewhere, and if this was a full-blown new tower, you would get that information.
I mean, how would we get the?
G I S? That's, I think they do, actually.
There's an overlay?
I wanna see if I can, I have them pull that up, or not, they probably could provide it, cause we have that documentation.
It's important for us.
And any new application we get that gets added.
Exactly.
I mean, I, I have Verizon service at my house, and I've had many conversations with Verizon, and they tell me I'm in a dead spot.
Okay.
And the other two major companies.
Mm-hmm.
You, you get no service at all.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. So, it is a problem. Yeah, definitely.
Well, there is technology out there. Nobody seems to be looking into it.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that's the fact.
But this is, uh, in conformance with our master plan because it is co-location. They're taking existing structures and they're reutilizing them, which is ideal.
But T-Mobile is the, is the major owner of this tower, right?
Uh, no, they're just the applicants. The owner is, um, the owner of the property, which I can't remember off the top of my head.
So who owns the tower?
I think it's American Tower or something.
Yeah, American.
American Tower.
Yeah, American Tower.
So we don't do, have deal, have dealings with them at all, American Tower?
They're the ones who approve the application when it comes in. They're the ones giving authorization of it.
But we don't deal with them. We deal with the co-locator?
The applicant's the one, they're the applicants in this case, T-Mobile.
Okay, okay.
The other one was New Singler, which is a TT.
And T-Mobile doesn't work at all at my house.
Okay.
So.
Trying to fix that.
You need a one line.
I have a cable line, but.
Okay, so our action is to approve this?
Yes.
Motion?
Motion.
By Gloria, and second by Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, five in favor, two absent.
Is that a five? Or did she get a decision? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Puccio, laundry.
Should I have, um, the applicant come up? I would just see here.
Sure. This is the action deadline, right?
Uh, he's going, he's given us an extension for the twenty-eighth. Do you wanna just act on that right now? Just do the extension to the twenty-eighth?
Okay, motion to.
Motion.
Extend by George to the twenty-eighth, uh, second. By Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, five in favor, two absent.
This is the. Can you share? I, I think I emailed it, but here's some version for you.
Okay, Gloria, thank you.
Do you wanna identify yourselves for the report?
Sure. Michael Wilkinson, ten seventy, Middle Country Road, Suite Seven, Selden, New York, one one seventy-four, for the applicant.
You an attorney?
No. No, I'm the architect.
The architect. Mr. Puccio?
Yeah.
Mr. Puccio.
This has been a little while since you've seen this. Um, they've been going back and forth. This is a very, um, sloping parcel in Hampton Bay. I'm gonna pull this up on the Arium. It's a vacant piece of property, um, and they've been going back and forth with the town engineer about the engineering of this, um, parcel. So that's, that's the site plan I gave you. Also, I think the elevations would be relevant, so I think I do have copies of that, too. Um, but the original, um, hearing on this was back in February of twenty twenty-three, so it's been a little while since, uh, the public commented on this. It's construction of a fifty-two thousand twenty-five square foot laundromats with sixty-four washing machines and associated parking. It has received a variance from those zoning board appeals for some variance for the parking on the property. Um, but they are providing cross-access and a shared parking arrangement with the property to the east. Um, so there's some flexibility the planning board can grant with parking also on the property. Um, do you think the most productive is I'll go through the staff?
Doesn't Mr. Puccio own the property to the east?
He does.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. So I want you to be comfortable with this, because, you know, coming up against the action deadline, we are working out the issues with the town engineer. I think we've gotten to a point where the town engineer is gonna be able to approve the plans at this time.
Because of the grade difference?
Because of grade difference. It was, at one point, there was some parking on the grade, and that would not be appropriate. Um, so there's been some redesign with the parking. Um, uh, you, I understand you're not, there's no, no changes of the arrangement with the slope, the slopes and things like that, right? You're just waiting for the town engineer to respond, right?
We, we did, uh, respond to his comments, and we did, um, we did make some changes, obviously, to, uh, to the grade, to the entrance. Um, you know, we're adhering to the eight percent slope, uh, five percent slope, and the two percent that the handicapped accessible, uh, spots.
So the slope is?
Pretty significant. It's twenty feet from front to back.
Really?
Yes. Yeah, it's pretty significant. So we do have some.
The cross-access is it?
Well, yeah.
Unless you have a sly.
So we do have, um, this updated plan. It's really more conceptual, uh, in nature.
Is one, or do you have a little one?
Oh, I have a little one, yes, there is.
Now, I'll take a little one.
Sure.
And what's the, the street right across? I'm trying to get oriented here. What's?
He's right next to you.
Tittersweet.
Tittersweet.
And that, so that's the bank here.
Okay, okay.
I think it's big from, big from America.
Okay. Thank you.
And then you're trying, cause there's two doors down from this.
Yeah, actually, this elevation has changed due to the grade.
Okay.
Uh, not significantly. We've, we've kept most of the architecture. We've just, uh, amended the, uh. I believe you have the updated elevations as well.
I think so. I just, I only think I only have one copy, that's why.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I had to copy it a couple of times for the board, but I didn't keep myself one copy.
Yeah, it's sort of.
So at the cross, cross-access point, is that the deepest pitch?
No, uh, but that, that was the average.
But that's in the rear.
Yeah, so that was the average that I used. Yeah, it's in the rear of the property.
Yeah.
That was the average grade line that we used.
Uh-huh.
And then we slowed down, you know, the eight percent, and then it created a wall in the back, uh, which I think now is about, um. Well, we brought up the grade, I'm sorry. So what we used is, we used the twenty-five-foot buffer from the railway. We used that, and then we put up a wall, and then we graded it. Yeah, so we're using the topography.
So you're an architect and an engineer.
Yeah, I've been doing both, actually.
So what's, what's the height of the wall above the back, above the grade?
Uh, the back, it came to about five feet, five and a half feet.
Do you propose to put a fence on that, and cover that wall?
We'll put a fence on it, yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so nobody gets hurt. Yes. And we are, um, I see, I see in the staff report, uh, the recommendation for the EV chargers, so we'll put three EV chargers in as part of the, uh, sustainable.
High-speed?
High-speed.
People are saying, oh, I can't find a high-speed charger.
Fast charging, eight hundred.
We, we will do our best.
And solar to.
Not forever.
To reduce your energy costs?
Uh, we were talking about solar. Uh, just the, the nature of the building, unfortunately, is, uh, east, you know, it's, uh, there is no real southern exposure, so. Yeah, we'll try to make it work.
Do you wanna go through the report?
I do. Um, can I, I think I should mention all the public comments that we will receive, um, by writing. So I'm, I'm gonna start on page two, if that's good. Uh, development is significant at Montauk Highway and the downtown area. Increased in traffic, strain on our water system. Recommended delay in review opposed to application. Sixty-four parking spaces are overkill for the hamlet. Questions hours of operation. Laundromat will be, comma, hangout. Indensity, parking and water quality consistence concern. Our constants, our constant concerns.
I think you could fix, fix laundry mat.
Yeah, laundry mat, yeah. That looks weird, too.
Is that like a bath mat?
Exactly. Um, I didn't include the ZVA application, but they gave the variances for the parking, um, but I will include that in here. Um, and so we'll go to the referrals, which is.
So they got a parking variant?
They did.
Yes, we did.
They did. Um, so the first referral is fire marshal. It is, describes the application. Uh, so they talk about parking spots. That's all been redesigned at this point. Um, that's the third paragraph, which, fourth paragraph is about the dumpster. Make sure they have a, a conforming actual location, and, um, they want the whole entrance to be a fire zone. That's appropriate. So we'll have that as a condition. And then the leaching pools, the signage is appropriate. The leaching pools to explain the heavy equipment, that would appropriate. Um, should not keep nervous vehicles, uh, served by water main supply hydrants. And then additional fire safety concerns will be addressed during the leak permit review. The town engineer had several, several comments, um, over the years, and so we have the two, two demos. Um, and then there has been a recent meeting where I think we got, we got this all ironed out, so we'll have his com, final comments before a decision for you. Um, there's the fire commissioners, um, felt that it was sufficient for the Hampton Bay's fire disaster. Um, county, and there's gonna be, have to be a county permit in this case, and they'll have to conform with, um, the draft curb cuts, uh, for ADA compliance, and that will be part of their permit process. And then they've got approval from the ARB, uh, for the appearance of the building, which is pretty, it's a pretty nice-looking building, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's very.
Looks nice.
Very standard, so it's good. Um, so those are the comments we received back. It is a special exception use? Oh, you have a question?
Health department's?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we did have, it's in the back of your package.
It's not listed on this report.
No, it doesn't list it on this report, all right?
I gave, I gave you a copy.
Let me look, let me look. We may have received it. Yeah, well, they need health department approval, that's for sure.
We, we have health.
I'm gonna send them my bill for the health department reports I've been highlighting today.
Yeah, it's in the last page of the packet. I gave you a copy.
I'll reference it, uh, cause there's a standard for, um, the sanitary system. I'll reference that in the, in the staff report.
Claire, you got any, the, uh, the concern about the strain on the water system? Was that the Hampton Bays water district?
It is.
And were they consulted?
Yes, and we have an availability letter from it. Yep, they're aware of it. Uh, we also have DUC approval for the rain claim system, so, uh, we have a permit. I can give you a copy if you wish.
Yeah, Claire should have all of that in, yeah. Claire, do you have all of these permits?
I'm going to list them. So, uh, water availability for Hampton Bays Water District?
Yep, we have that.
I'm gonna put the health department approval.
Yes, you want to see them?
Um, and then the DUC, right?
Yep, I have that, too.
Perfect. I'm gonna list them all and the dates, the whole year dates.
DUC permit?
Sure. Yeah, there's seventeen thousand two hundred gallons per day treated laundry waste water.
Speed is moving.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, speed is.
Yeah, there's equal access from the front and back entrances, cause I would think most people would park in the back, cause of the parking.
It's going to be more back entrance if equal access. The front will be, um, more, um, walking, don't going down the stairs. So if you, if it was eight, if it's ADA, it would be that you park in the back and then you would enter, cause it's the, they actually, it will be a basement, basically, that you're walking into if you.
Low, low.
Well, because of the grade.
Because of the grade. We thought that would be the best way to create most accurate parking.
Because, the reason I ask is that on-street parking in this area has been a concern for, you know, quite a while.
It's gonna discourage people from doing, because they'll have to walk down a set of stairs.
Right, okay, good. Thank you, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have four spaces, accessible spaces in here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd rather they parked in the back and not on the street.
Yeah, all the parking is in the back, except for four spaces, I think.
But they'll park in the street if they can, if it's easy. Well, okay, good.
So architecturally, looking at this, um, are these glass panes?
They'll be glass, yeah.
Glass. Is there an opportunity for you to put some solar on this section of the metal?
Yeah, like we said, we, we were gonna explore, uh, solar.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I didn't think I could make solar work at my house.
Okay.
And I'm now, basically, I, I do not pay for electric at all, including plugging in a hybrid car.
That's great.
So this would be helpful in terms of maybe heating water, you know, it certainly, we're really encouraging it. I mean, it's not mandated, but the, um, the community climate plan is really calling for as much solar as possible.
And this was, this type of facility is gonna use a lot of electricity.
Right.
So it's, it, it's more than likely that it'll, it'll pay for itself with the reduced utility bills.
Keep your bill down.
Yeah.
That's my, my mini-speech.
So it's hardy plank, stone, and what? Just asphalt roof?
Asphalt shingles, and we have a metal roof over the.
Over the center.
Center.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was originally an insurance, but then it's changed.
Yeah, right. I think it'll look nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a nice looking building.
And you'll have some nice land. Do we have a landscaping plan?
Yes. Yes, we submitted landscaping. I don't know if you have a pack. I, I have a smaller version if you need.
No, let's see what I have.
What hap, what happened was, this is the older version, and then we got to engineering, and we've made some changes to the grade, so. So this is the older landscaping, yes, we have.
So on the front, you're putting.
Some street trees.
Evergreen?
Yep. Yeah, the back will have the evergreen.
And our lights open. As long as you're not planting pine. And lighting, too? We have a lighting, uh?
Yeah, there's a lighting.
There's a lighting plan, yeah.
Mrs. All self-service laundromat stuff, uh, you're not doing a dry cleaning or any other, nothing?
No.
We're gonna have people, uh, truly, uh, uh, are they, okay?
For which?
Truly, the, uh.
Like people could drop it off or something?
Yeah, there's a dry cleaning service, but there's no dry.
And it would be done, right. No dry cleaning, just laundry services.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
So the poles, you know, ten feet on the poles. You don't have any landscaping? Where are the EVs going to be? The charging stations?
Well, we just got that comment, so we're gonna incorporate it into, to submission to the engineering department.
Claire, you'll go over that lighting plan?
Uh, yes, I'll double-check the pole heights, uh, should it be ten feet or less. Now, the only thing I really wanna go over, maybe, is the parking. Just wanna get a handle on that. Um, so the ZVA, this is page four, it's I. So the site generates, um, sixty-four parking spaces. The ZVA granted, um, a waiver of twenty spaces, so a total forty-four required. Are we, we at forty-four now, or are we?
It's forty, it's forty-three.
Forty-three, okay.
Okay, and then we have, uh, twenty-two, I believe, on the adjacent parcel.
Okay.
Of shared parcel.
So what they can do now is that they can, could have even covered the ZVA variance also with that shared parking agreement.
Sure, sure.
So we're still gonna have them have the shared parking agreement, that they are allowed to park on either sides. Both sites will be bound by it. I think it just makes sense.
Oh, gosh, yes. Same property owner.
And they have the cross-access.
And also, as long as, as long as you get your access ramp, however you're gonna do it.
Yeah, that's why we took the grade.
Between, yeah, that's critical.
And use that as the, uh.
Yeah.
You know, as our main grade, and we worked from there.
Because this will be car-intensive, I'm sure. People will be coming and going.
They're not gonna be walking with a bag over their arms of laundry.
Uh, it's, uh, it's possible. I live in Farmingville, and you see them up and down the road all the time.
Yeah, so if you park in the next, at the, in the office building, is there going to be pedestrian ramp that you can walk up?
It's a great question. I think, that probably makes sense, right?
We should have that entered, designed that as part of the ramp, maybe a walkway with a little, uh, split rail fence or something, because.
Yeah, there's some.
Good idea.
We could do that.
Yeah, I'm gonna put that in there. I'll just make sure that we cover that, the pedestrian walkway between the sites.
Yeah, on the little bridge or whatever they're doing. What do you call that? What do you call your connector?
Oh, separate.
Ramp.
Oh, the cross axes?
Yeah, what do you call the, the grade?
The walkway?
The walk, you're gonna have like a little road, a road, right?
Well, a little walkway for pedestrians.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Separate from the driveway.
Separate from the car. What else, Claire? Were you?
That was the big thing. Those are the big things that I had on the property.
And they got a, they got a variance for twenty cars.
Twenty cars, yeah.
But that's because they have shared parking, so that makes sense.
Yes, and I think you could have even granted it to them at that point.
Yes, without having gone through the ZVA, yeah.
Yeah, the other thing was.
I think the code says you can have up to one-third, a third of your parking on an adjacent park.
Yeah, so that would have been forty-three, would have been fine.
Yeah.
And the, so the office use is really, is compatible with the laundry mats. Because when the offices are closed, generally speaking, the, and we do have a letter from a professional laundry systems, and they explain in greater detail the.
People come at night?
The hours of operation and when the laundry mats are busy.
After four.
Yeah.
Yeah, escalate between four and five PM till about eight. Yes, but the, the office building is beautiful that you put up. I think it's very, very nice. Did you, the architect on that?
Twenty years ago.
No. Really?
Done a good job.
Thank you.
Twenty?
And so what are the hours of operation, do you think?
Oh, yeah. So the laundry mat, hours of operation is going to be five AM to twelve AM, Monday through Saturday. Seven AM to eleven PM Sundays, eight AM to eight PM on holidays.
I'll list that in here. It'll be a condition of approval. You guys, you could put that, right?
Yes.
Absolutely.
We're not anywhere near.
No, residential.
Residential.
No, we have the tracks behind us, and everything else next to us and across the street is a little commercial.
How long is a typical wash-to-dry cycle?
That is a great question.
Curious how many, how many people might be coming and going.
I could tell them.
Yeah, you don't know that?
How does your, how does your house work?
Speed wash, speed wash.
Great, thanks.
I think the newer machines are like.
I should have said.
Yeah, it's like twenty, twenty-five minutes for the newer machines.
Right, and then the dryers are. So it's about an hour.
Yeah, roughly.
Roughly an hour, a little bit more. Okay.
Well, so you know, it takes better than what happened at my house.
Takes me a little bit longer. It's good to know.
So this is break you back. I can, well, to get the town engineer, so I'm not sure if it's the next meeting or a subsequent one. I will have listed approval conditions.
So to March, to March twenty-eighth, we also, we did the extension.
Yes, March twenty-eighth at this time, we're, I'd really be really comfortable with having the town engineer full approval.
Yes.
You know, one or two conditions, that's fine.
Yeah.
So we're working, we're working with him.
It'd be nice to get this off our agenda.
It would be, right?
Yes.
We would love.
Yes, you're getting close. You're getting close.
We'd like to start though.
Okay, thank you. Good to see you, Mr. Puccio.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Lou.
Okay, Atlantic Gulf Course Staff Housing is impatiently waiting.
Should we have, this one is, the deadline's not till the next meeting, so I thought I'd bring it to you, go to the stack report, and then still do the additional proof for the next one. You've obviously seen this before, so you're familiar with it a little bit. And I think Tony had some like.
Are you here for the next session?
I'm here for the twenty-eighth, not the thirteenth.
Okay, so you're here for the next session?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So this is.
Come, Tony.
Did I give you my name or something?
I printed one out.
Oh, you did.
Lose Mr. Suskaid? He's that impatient, right?
Oh, yeah, do you wanna see if Dennis Suskaid is available to?
And Wayne's still in his kitchen.
Wayne's there.
He's still in his kitchen.
Dennis Suskaid?
No, not on here.
Okay.
Okay, we can start.
So I just wanna go through, this is different than the last time you saw it, because, well, the last time you saw it, site plan, because it is a special exception at this time.
Oh, so you, these are the sta, you've gone through the standards, right?
Yeah, the standards in this case. And I, so I start off with like a little bit of a description, of course, what's going on. That hasn't really changed. It is still sixteen bedrooms, sixteen employees. But I do go through the history here. I'll give you a little snapshot, so that's that. Planning board issued a negative declaration, January twenty-fifth. There was a public hearing on February twenty-second, and the following comments received at the public hearing. Represent neighbors who are opposed to the application. Projects compatible with the neighborhood, project should be denied, project does not change or remains opposed. How does the application proceed despite ongoing litigation? Master plan and view sheds, lower adjacent property assessment because of blocked view sheds. A balance of, balance of act, balancing act of affordable housing and view sheds. And support the projects. The following were written comments received during the process and the ten-day provided written comment period. Opposed to the staff housing, support the project. So these are the comments from the different agencies that are attached. The fire marshal, February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, said, proposed work shall not impede emergency vehicle access. Street numbers shall be posted, key dock, key boxes are required, fire zones will be required. Depending on the location, the fire protection and life safety systems, area served by public service, water mains and fire hydrants. Additional fire and life safety concerns will be addressed during the building review. Highway departments, February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, said that they will need to hold harmless permits with high through departments. And they will not receive approval, and so they submit for that. The fire district of Rich Hampton had no requests or recommendations regarding the plans. Sepakani Department of Economic Development said it was a matter of determination. And the DEC came back with some comments, February twenty-seventh. And they had comments related to Schwartz Ponds.
What are they saying?
They're saying no disturbance within a hundred feet, and they're well beyond the hundred feet with this case. They actually, the second, the third paragraph has to do with northern longyear bad, but there's no proposed clearing of any trees associated with this project. The invasive tree that's, that's there, that's already been removed, right? The Russian olive that you wanted to take.
There was a Russian olive that was located on the roadside, that Marty had asked us to remove. And we did. There is a Russian olive that's on the property side. It's not, it's, it's on the neighbor's property, the trunk, and it comes over. We've left that, because the trunk is in the neighbor's property.
Right.
Did you identify yourself? You did, right? Okay, that's the DEC comments in this case. And the fire conservation comments. I just received this today, so I just, these are kinda new. I brushed over them this morning. The requirements of chapter three twenty-five are being met by the site plan application, as all construction activity would be located at a setback greater than two hundred feet from wetlands. Additionally, a minimum a hundred-foot wide wetland buffer will be provided for. The scope of the intended buffer needs to be more definitively delineated, and the wetlands and buffer need to be labeled as a wetlands preservation area and naturally vegetated wetland non-disturbance style fertilization buffer, respectively. So we'll just make sure those notes are put on the plan. Pervious rather than asphalt paving should be used for the entirety of the stairwell driveway to soften the look of the driveway as viewed from the town designated scenic scuttle hole road.
That's good, good suggestion.
So it is proposed to be gravel, to be.
Grass paved?
Grass, and not grass paved.
We had this in the initial submission, and the problem is, is that we have handicap parking spaces. And that under state code and town code, in order to do that, we have to have a suitable surface for it. We've come across this with Tom Hout, the engineer, before. So we, unless we're removing the handicap parking spaces, we have to be paved from the parking spaces to the building, which is why we have it paved from the road to the handicap parking spaces. Everything else, from that line, we said perfectly fine.
Except from the edge of the parking area to the house.
For someone that would be coming in that's handicapped, from those parking spaces to get in, and then out to the road. Because we weren't gonna do gravel paving and then go back to gravel. So I could show you on the site plan, but it's the same thing.
So it'll be gravel.
Everything that, that is not a concern for handicap.
Will be gravel. And then that area where, yeah, they have to get out of the car to.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Claire.
Yeah, four, five, and six are suggestions for substitutions, and they sound reasonable to me. So I think they're gonna just substitute the more native plantings in those cases. And then seven, which is a new one, but I think an interesting one. In interest of reducing potential fire risk and ensuring the safety of staff, consideration should be given to providing an outdoor E bike charging station, which I think would be appropriate to the site, so I'm suggesting that. We'll include that as a condition. And then the last page is the ARB indication for the project. So the stack report goes on about the use. I just clarify that it is now a special exception use, living quarters for golf course employees. And then wetlands. I'll go through this and make sure it conforms with the code, but with Marty's comments also. So those are the standards of that. So special exception standards, the general standards I've gone through, they all are met. There's nothing specific to the property. They meet the parking requirements. They're providing sixteen parking spaces, but six of them are gonna be landbanks, because many of the people won't have cars. They'll be going around on golf carts and such, that, that. If they, if you ever feel the need to install them in the future, there'll be a landbank covenants that they'll, they'll have to install them. So I'm gonna skip over A through N, but I'll go to these specific conditions related to the golf courses, if you're comfortable with that. So A says, living quarters for golf course employees shall be located in the same property as an eighteen-hole golf course, and only for as long as the golf course exists.
Page nine.
Thank you.
She's on page nine.
Page nine at the beginning, I'm sorry. So the stack response is the property is currently approved from existing eighteen-hole golf course, which I will put in there. Which was issued as certificate of occupancy, therefore the standard is met. Do you want any special condition that says, that just kind of reiterates the code? If it's ever not a golf course, the staff housing use shall be terminated. Does that make sense? I think that is condition of approval.
Yeah, well, I mean, but your response is, is more related to the golf course rather than the staff housing. Isn't the living quarters of the golf course shall be located on the same property?
Yeah, so it's, it's saying to, to me, that that standard says two things. One is that there has to be an eighteen-hole golf course, and there is.
That you established.
Yes. The second one is, I think I do need to address, is that, and only for as long as it exists. You know, I'll state that, and also maybe make that a condition of approval.
Yeah.
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 Do you need to include the word operating? Operating eighteen-hole golf course?
Existing and operating?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sounded like an attorney.
Thank you. Still shaken by the laundry comment?
That wasn't coming from me.
Well, there are, not in our area, but there are a number of golf courses closing across the country.
So it's, it's an appropriate point.
So you're gonna add, as, as long, it, it, it's use is.
Existing and operating, and then I'll, and then also have a condition to your site plan.
That the, that the staff housing will exist as long as the.
Yep. So this next standard is a very specific standard.
Living quarters for golf.
Living quarters for golf course employees shall be located no less than a hundred and fifty feet from any side and rear lot line. It shall be no less than the required front yard setback for principal building for the applicable zone. Notwithstanding anything as contrary, the planning board may approve reduced setbacks where the adjacent properties are not residentially zoned or protected open space or golf course uses. So they, the first setback is the setback to the east, to the residence that is closest to the property, and that is a hundred and fifty foot, a hundred and fifty-one foot setback. So that does meet that setback. They're also providing some landscaping in that area, so I can mention that also.
I think you have to be specific, Claire. It's located a hundred and fifty-one feet from the side. Which side?
To the east side.
East.
East side?
The east side.
One fifty-one nine.
One fifty-one nine. And a hundred and forty-eight feet from.
The other side lot line, which is to the north.
To the north? To the north side lot line, which is now town open space.
Town-owned open space. Now, because it's one fifty-eight, forty-eight, and it's point something, something.
One seven.
They, they would need your permission pursuant to that last sentence of that standard to make that finding, that they could have that one forty-eight, or you could make the determination that they do need to meet the one fifty in that case.
Well, the planning board may approve reduced setbacks where the adjacent properties are not residentially zoned. Is that residentially?
It is.
It is.
But it is protected.
Or protected open space, or golf course users.
But that's town property now.
It is town-owned property through CPF purchase assembly.
So that's, is that considered protected?
It's protected space.
I would think it's protected, yeah. So let's put that in.
Okay, town-owned protected open space, okay. And then that one forty-eight, forty-eight points, I'll put the points in there.
Is there a point in there, the one forty?
Point seven.
Point seven?
Is it seven inches, or seven?
No, it's seven tenths of a foot.
It's seven tenths?
It's one forty-eight point seven.
Okay.
And the, the one is one forty-one, one fifty-one nine?
One fifty-one point nine.
Nine. Did you get that, Claire?
I do. Now I have it. So I, I think you find it's reasonable for the one forty-eight, okay.
And then?
And then the building is several thousand feet away from the rear lot line. So that would be, this is the front lot line here. This is a side. This north portion is a side, and this is a side going all the way up here, 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 here. This is the rear lot line. But it's not, it's a front, because it's also there. So there's no rear lot line, actually. Actually, I'll say there's no rear lot line on this case, because this is a frontage. It's a private road.
There's no rear lot line? Is that guy a road?
No, it's no-ack path. It's a dirt road.
The road, though.
Yeah.
It's a front, there's no front, there's no rear. I wanna change this.
No rear lot line. So we're taking up the building is several thousand feet?
Yep, it's not from the rear yet, one, so. It's several thousand feet from the other front lot line.
Okay, C?
C is that there be no more than four, fifty golf course employees total permitted to reside on the premises with a maximum of twenty-five employees per new building. All living quarters for golf course employees currently approved by the town of Southampton that benefit from existing certificates of compliance occupancy shall be counted towards the allowable den, maximum density. Fifty employees on the premises, notwithstanding the setbacks, the building may not comply with subsection B above. Stack response, according to the applicant's application, the golf course currently has housing accommodations for twenty-two employees. The proposal is for sixteen employees, and the proposed.
Total.
Application, for a total of thirty-eight employees.
Yeah.
Therefore, the standard is met. D.
But that also means you could put more employees in there if wanted.
There could be another, some other thing in the future, wouldn't be in that building.
Not in that, okay.
Excuse me, Claire, can I just ask you, are eighteen and nineteen long?
Eighteen and nineteen long. No, they're complete disitements.
Okay.
They're, they're a couple minutes. You're gonna, the one, you're gonna be go what? When it comes to that.
We have, well, it's ten after five, so I'm looking at the clock.
We're almost there with this, this, and then if, if you wanna look at it, and obviously there'll be. there'll be, I think you're comfortable with what we've done so far, so.
Yeah, so go ahead.
Yep. This one's easier. This is the height. She'll be at least thirty-two feet. I'm gonna summarize it at this point. It's twenty-nine with eight inches. The building meets that requirement. So the last one is the size of the building. I'm gonna read this one, though. This is kind of specific. Maximum permitted size of any new building in the living quarters for golf course employees shall not exceed seven thousand square feet of total floor area with a total of fourteen thousand square feet aggregate, if more than one new building is proposed, as measured from the outs. Oh, yeah, I misunderstood this, I think. Do I have to get all the buildings that are all are built on the property? I think I do, right?
Measure from the, uh-
Any new building.
We're only talking about the new building.
Right.
We're only talking about this one.
Oh, yes, right, right, right. Exactly. Okay, yes.
It's written in the next paragraph.
Okay.
Yeah. As measured from the outermost exterior walls of the structure, including any habitable space in the basement, the massing of buildings and associated parking facility arrangements shall be situated to reduce and minimize any impacts on adjacent neighboring properties. Adaptive reuse or expansion of existing buildings is permitted with practical. The proposed building is a total of sixty-two hundred and twenty-two square feet with a footprint of thirty-six ninety-four square feet. There is no proposed habitable space in the basement. The size of the building is smaller than two other recent buildings.
You have similar.
Is similar to two other recent builds along a set of whole roads.
Well, it's smaller, that's for sure. It's a much smaller building.
I can say smaller.
Yeah.
Say less than.
Your word was better, it was more correct than what was written here.
Smaller.
Less than or smaller? Should I say smaller or less than? Less than?
I guess less than.
Less than two others, recent builds.
Okay. And then I put the square footage of those two, and then the existing house immediately to the east has a living space of approximately sixteen hundred and thirty-two square feet. And then parking lot will be made-
That's very small. Why, what, why is that?
It's an old house.
It's an old.
Okay. It's a little old house.
Next one. Yeah. So, and this is the parking lot with the permium material. So, sorry, it's paved for the access road to the, in the handicap spaces. Okay, so I'll change that. So do you find that this is in keeping with the neighborhood? Because that's, that's the standard to be met, right? Neighboring properties.
Where are you now, standard, site plan standard?
Planning board finds.
Time board finds, finish that sentence.
Oh, oh, oh. Yes, it's in, it looks like a residential home.
Yes.
A small one.
Mm-hmm.
In size and design.
In size, yes.
Yeah. Great. The rest of them, there's nothing too crazy. Was there anything else, Wayne or Tony, that you have?
Wayne wants to say something.
May I say something?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yes, Wayne.
Claire, I just wanna go back. At one point, there is a section talking about, in this general standards, adequate provisions made for collection, disposal, stormwater, as well as sanitary sewage, and I just wanted to acknowledge that the health department has approved the project, and that's also why you haven't gotten a referral back.
Okay.
Because it approved the project, that's it.
Okay.
And then I think that's important for the board to acknowledge that.
Right.
Yeah, just a copy of the permit, I guess, or, so I can reference the date?
I believe you have it, but we'll get you that.
Okay. I'll put that in the second part. Okay. So if you're good, I'll come back with the, off conditions at the next meeting.
Any other comments, Wayne, or that's it?
No, that's, it's fine. Any comments, you know, I've seen some typos, and we'll get the Claire on those as well.
Okay, good. Tony, you're okay?
Good.
Great. Okay, thank you. So we'll have a report.
Thanks for spending the afternoon.
Right, yes.
I hope you get a break before six.
Oh, I don't know. Okay, so we'll vote on this then on the twenty-eighth, Claire, when you tighten it up?
Yeah, I tighten the staff report up, and I'll have conditions for you for approval.
So we're moving now to eighteen, Speonk Floating Photovoltaic.
Do you wanna come up?
Volts.
Sorry, sorry, you're waiting.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Identify yourself for the record, and then we can talk.
Been a long afternoon for you.
Members of the board, Peter Loyola, CLA site. Before you start, kudos to your planning staff and this board. You are a well-oiled machine. I've been doing this a long time.
We are a good board.
You are.
We're very-
Kudos to the staff.
Proud of this board.
I have to tell you, I had to Google, Google photo.
And I did.
Solar. I just say solar. I get it all, I guess slipped up all the time.
So give us your now, your Peter Loyola.
Peter Loyola, CLA site. We're out of Saratoga Springs. This is Steve Olney. He's with Marine Energy Technology Solutions.
Steve O-L-M-E-Y?
O-L-N-E-Y. N-E-Y.
Olney.
And I'm here with Kevin Brown.
I have to tell him it's Hawaii.
I know, Hawaii.
Kevin Brown.
Kevin Brown, Ole Brown, Syracuse, New York.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we're representing NextGen, and-
Lou Russell is here also.
You can bring a chair over if you'd like.
I'm sorry, we don't have a lot of time.
No, 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 that's fine. We'll be really brief with this, I think.
Yeah, so you wanna do an overview, and at the end, if you want a work session, be told you want, so.
I'm intrigued as to what you're gonna do.
Yeah, no, this is, we're excited to present.
This is the floating one?
This is floating solar.
I'm gonna reach over here.
Yeah. Yeah, this would be good. So floating solar, it's a technology-
Watch the mic. Fly away from the mic.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Floating solar, it is a technology that's been around about ten years, and Steve will talk all about the, you know, the technical pieces of that. We think it's a great project, because it, first of all, it meets your comprehensive plan, you know, sustainability plan, climate action plan, and we are on a perfect site to do this, because it's currently mined, are currently under a mine land use plan, thirty-two-point-nine acres. We've been through and vetted, Kevin and I, and Lou, we've started this project ten years ago, over ten years ago now, and we continue to get permit renewals, you know, to continue to do the mining. And we are, have vetted all the environmental issues. Clearing, there's no clearing that's, that's gonna result from this whatsoever. We've taken a look at groundwater. If you folks need to see groundwater samples, we've been doing that for ten years, so recharge and all the impacts to, you know, aquifer, because we know we're on aquifer dips, all of, in aquifer overall district. Also with the pine barrens, there's no vegetation that is being removed as a result of this project. In fact, we've already reclaimed the entire east side of the, I think, I think all of it's done, right? The east side of the, of the mine now concurrently. That's something that we get involved with heavily, concurrent reclamation on any of these.
Is this the Huntington sand?
Sand and gravel, yeah. Yeah. And they've been operating now successfully for ten years, and again, we're trying to push this forward as an application, because I think it's such a good beneficial use, and I think it would really set some precedent, I think, for, for floating solar.
And the water is there, how, now?
We're dredging and digging below the water table. We have a permit to actually do that, so we're taking sand and gravel, and we're actually creating a man-made water body. So this is a man-made water body.
From the aquifer?
Well, it's within the aquifer.
It's in a glacial.
It's in a glacial aquifer, right. And the impacts, the impacts to the water have been fully vetted and addressed.
Yeah, if I could just, so far on that site, we've done ten years of DEC groundwater monitoring, volatiles, semi-volatiles, metals, all good results. Early on, many mine sites were open areas, do a mulch operation. And HRMC did a mulch operation for a while, then an issue came up, I think horse block road, with the mulch, when rainwater hits it, it tends to run off, can cause some leaching of manganese and iron, that increases the readings.
Not good, yes.
We, they stopped as soon as there was any issue. But right after that, the county, Suffolk County Health Services went to all the sites that had ever had mulch and took samples, down gradient samples. Those samples were in our report to DEC on the mine permit, and it showed we hadn't impacted anything yet. It wasn't that big an operation, it hadn't been there that long. So mulch has been gone for a decade also, and there's, anything that was there is gone, but we never got a bad reading from all the DEC monitoring. Suffolk County did, it was one, you know, they came through Suffolk County, just went to all the sites and did a round or two. We also put in an application to the town for the town's groundwater monitoring. It's in, we haven't been, we haven't gotten response, but we put it all in, it's in there. We also are participating in the voluntary program, DEC Long Island Mine Study, and that's a really expansive program. They're looking at everything. Things that have nothing to do with mining, they're looking at befowas, everything else. There's no, so far the results are all good. So it's, it's, it's clean.
So is this a stable body of water?
Yeah, yeah.
And you've stopped mining, you are not going to-
No, we're, no, we're continuing to mine, you know, in, in this project. We're permitted for a five-acre lake, and we're looking for an amendment to go to fourteen-acre lake, and it-
That's been pending since twenty-twenty. As you all know, there's a lot of litigation.
Oh, there's a lot of litigation for that mine, yes.
We got kind of caught up, and to tell you the truth, because at one point, the appellate division just said, "That's it, no mining on Long Island," my firm got involved for a while. We went up to court of appeals, it came back, it's not that anymore, as you know, it's, uh, not coming.
Are you proposing to do the mining at the same time, that they're there?
Initially, we were, initially, we thought we could maybe draw some power. They've invested to make an electric site, so they got rid of all their truck, you know, they got rid of the heavy-duty stuff, the diesel-powered, and they went electric dredge conveyors. We were planning initially, we were thinking, well, we could start right away, get one phase of the solar and run the plant. The problem with that is it would require battery storage, and, you know, there's just too much going on with battery storage.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that.
So what's really happened is, we're halfway through the plan. There's about, I don't know the exact cut and fill, but they've already spent a lot of the money they made on the first phase to invest in getting the electric dredge and electrifying the site. Now we're waiting on our next permit. It hasn't come yet because of all the litigation. DEC is not processing. But we think we have the rights to mine, and we can keep litigating forever on this. But if we can just get the site plan approval, they will finish up the mining in three to four years, using, now that they have the dredge there, they'll be able to pay for everything we're gonna have to pay for, which we're gonna have to get. Steve has done a feasibility study. That just says, yep, take all these raw numbers, we can get there. You know, we think we can get there. It's about a fourteen percent rate of return, thirteen million dollar investment. We can pay to do this, but what we have to know is gonna go forward, because the next thing we have to do is hire engineering procurement and contracting firm. They're expensive. We've already worked with Selffair, Steve has. They're the guys that manufacture the floating technology. Steve has already met with two EPC firms that Selffair recommended, one, one in-
New Jersey, one in Florida.
One in Florida, one in New Jersey. He's met with them. We're ready to sign on, but that's, I mean, we're gonna have to put a lot of money on that.
You just said you had, like, three or four years, you would wrap it up. Are you saying that you have three to four years to, left in what you can mine, or you're saying you're willing to cut the mining short to do that?
No, we'll finish up. It'll take about three, four years. We're in there, we'll finish up and follow it up with the floating solar, like described.
So what's this, excuse me, what's the size of this body of water you've created?
This is fourteen, this is fourteen acres.
This is what you'd like to do?
Correct.
What is there now?
It's the five, well, that's about, we're, I would say probably, what, two-thirds
of the way through?
This is twenty-twenty-two, by the way.
Yeah.
It's further north now.
The expansion's going to the north?
No, to the south, actually, yeah. Well, kind of-
The expansion's actually going to the east. What's-
No, 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 we're-
Yeah. It's going east, right?
A little bit of north, south, east.
Yeah, we started in, we started in the north, and we're actually kind of progressing, you know, we're progressing south and north and east, just to kind of finish up the model.
Is this lined?
Doesn't have to be, no, no.
Doesn't have to be lined.
Cause you're tapping into the aquifer.
It's coming out from that water.
You're dragging.
It's coming up.
We're just, we're coming out of the-
You're dragging as deep as the aquifer.
Yeah, yeah. And there's, there's-
So what's the guarantee that nothing toxic or bad is gonna go into the aquifer?
It's just a proven resource. It's a proven dredge mechanism in New York State. New York State DC recognizes underwater mining or dredging in, in an aquifer, in a water body.
Where do we find that information?
We can provide that.
Actually, I believe on the DEC website, you can read about the groundwater study.
Because we're right over our aquifer, and extremely protective of people monkeying around with it.
Absolutely.
But you're also pretty close proximity to that Speonk plume.
To the plume, yeah.
So just as a full disclosure, I'm, I'm friends with three hydrogeologists from Remsenberg. We're like the hydrogeologist capital of the world at present.
Right, absolutely.
So when, when public hearing comes, I'll guarantee you, they'll be here, because they actually were concerned, when they, when they started mining again, that they, that may alter the flow of the-
Right, right.
Okay, the Speonk plume from the, that comes from the wood yard, right?
Yeah.
It's right there.
Right, right, right.
It's right there.
Yeah, it's here.
I would say a half mile, three-quarter mile to the southwest. Right. It's down gradient. It's not, it's actually off the gradient. The gradient there is, is slightly to the southeast. Yeah, I know, it pictures. That, you can just take the contour maps, we got them. And it's going, we're going away from that, and that's flowing away from us. We're not involved in all this. The good news is, all that's in all the DE studies and reports we've done, and all the hydrogeo we've done, to start from scratch here and say you're gonna do this, it would take ten years. Yeah. And then you gotta go get the interconnect, get the EPC, get the interconnects, get everything else. It'd be twenty years. Can you explain the technology? Cause I've, I've literally never heard of floating panels.
Sure. It's, it's identical to the regular solar that you're familiar with, except for the fact that you don't have land-based infrastructure to hold it in place. These are placed on, the modules and panels are placed on floating elements that are interconnected, okay, to create the solar grid. In fact, at the fourteen acres, we'll have between nine thousand and ten thousand modules on the water body itself, all with an independent floating element that holds it in place at about a five-degree angle. And this is why you get a higher return on your solar infrastructure, is because, one, we can put it a lot closer together. We don't have the shading that goes on. You're at forty degrees latitude here, which means that there's a significant shading of each of the panels, so you have to spread your, your grid apart, where we don't have to, because it's horizontal on a water body. It's also not impacted by the foliage and whatnot around the water body, because it's an open lake, you know? I mean, you go fishing and whatnot, you know how sunny it is. The other thing is, is that solar panels degrade in efficiency with temperature. So during the summer months here, your solar on land will be significantly less efficient than the solar panels on the water, because in, either in contact or just by its close proximity to the water, it's gonna be five, five degrees cooler than it is on the land, okay? So that's gonna be a higher efficiency, usually ten to fifteen percent higher. So that's why floating solar is making a big, a big push right now. About ten years ago, you know, there was only a few megawatts of solar power in the United States, or in the United States, and now there's over two, almost four gigawatts of power globally. So it's a significantly large growth industry, and it's predominantly focused on implementation in man-made water bodies. You know, we don't wanna mess with natural water bodies.
Actually, I think they're, did we put it in the report?
So you're not putting it over ponds or freshwater lakes?
There's a report.
No, no, we're not putting them, right, well, there's some, but most of them, no.
Is there a best report?
You're putting them in, you know, retention ponds and farms, putting them in.
This is all we have.
Oh, you don't have the best report?
They're available for water source reservoirs and whatnot, because it reduces the evaporation. Okay, so in fact, when you talk about the recharge of your aquifer, you're gonna get about a five to six percent increase over what occurs right naturally, because you're preventing the evaporation of a significant portion of the water that would normally go away, and then, you know, rain further down the island or out at sea.
And then here, you don't have to worry about fish, or?
No, there's no, nothing to worry about there.
It's a man-made water body.
So what happens in a catastrophic weather event?
Okay, so first of all, these are practically horizontal on the water body, okay? So there's very little portion of it that can be caught by the wind. I heard you talking earlier about, you know, hurricanes and things like that. First of all, waves and whatnot won't occur at any significant level here, because waves are created by the friction of the wind over the water body over extended periods, or extended lengths of, of operation. So the waves won't be significant here, but these will be moored probably on the shore. We haven't done the full detailed design yet, but there'll be some mooring within the reservoir itself to the bottom to hold the things in place, but most of them will be on shore, and so-
And how do you, how do you calculate for evaporation over a period of time?
Well, that's, that's actually fairly simple, because we, we have a good idea of how much evaporates at this particular latitude over the course of the year.
The mine permit applications, all that, the water budget?
Well, we're just curious, so if it evaporates...
No, but you're also tapping into the aquifer.
That's right.
You don't have an evaporative water, water level dropping issue that you...
No, no, but this is also a collection of the water that rains in the area. So I mean, you guys are worried about all this filling up of the aquifer, it's not any higher than, than what the aquifer is. The rest of the water is, is, this is kind of a retention pond of the rain that falls in the area. I mean, that's, that's just the natural, that's what fills this up. And what I was getting at with the...
But is that what fills it up, or is the fact that you're going into the aquifer and the water's got...
This is, everything there is sand and gravel.
Yeah, there's no filling up.
Completely permeable.
So what happens, it hits the ground, it cools, and then it actually raises...
No, yeah, that whole, it's just the aquifer there. It's flowing through at a certain elevation in the...
There's no filling up here.
They are.
So who of you is a hydrologist? Are you a hydrologist?
We can, we can bring our hydrologists next.
No, the hydrologists will be here.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's why we're here.
And we'll bring Sam now in from Alphajew Science.
I just want to be cognizant of the time, I feel so bad. This is great.
I have one question, so you're proposing 7.3 megawatt system here. Where's the interconnection and this going to be?
Yeah.
That's part of the interconnection study that will have to be performed to identify exactly, that's usually done by a third party. So, you know, neither party has control over it. The P S E G or Leipa, I guess here is the, the one that will be consulted with by an independent consultant we have to hire. And that will be done in a further design effort.
But that all has to be thought out before this ever starts.
We do have, well, to get into that process, we need some kind of preliminary approval, because when we go to try to hire the folks to do the interconnect, the E P Cs, we're going to spend, you know, a lot of money to do that.
It's kind of, it's kind of...
It is a little bit...
In order to get some kind of approval, you also have to have no way that is happening.
Absolutely.
Yes.
It's chicken and egg thing.
Yes, exactly.
The same thing with community solar.
Interconnections, interconnection studies are commonplace. I mean, anytime you create an independent power production system, you have to go through the interconnection studies.
Well, we're wellfully understood on the east end of Long Island, interconnect.
And the challenge has been that in order to connect, you need to be in a spot that already exists with, or you're going to have to invest a lot of money.
Yeah, let's talk about that.
All right, we have five minutes.
Yeah, they electrified already.
Yeah, we had brought the power down, it was about 26 poles to the south for the, to power the electric dredge. So the power's already right at the site.
Yeah, we made the improvements already.
So we would just be simply tying back into it and putting it out versus using the power.
So you've already invested in, in the interconnection from, okay.
So when you refer to they, is this Huntington sand and brand, or are you people owners?
Nope, nope, NextGen and... NextGen and it's, NextGen owns the property.
NextGen?
NextGen LLC Property Management owns the property. It's a family business, and then Huntington Ready Mixed Concrete operates the mine site. So NextGen, because they own the land, the idea is finish the mining, install the solar, and, and then when the solar is decommissioned, we go back to this rec, that's why this can be a, a project that happens in less time than other types, because we've already got the reclamation plan, all we need's a decommissioning plan. We've already got the construction plan, it's been sitting at DEC now for four years to finish this. So all those plans are in, they've all been reviewed. The issues about groundwater, I know there's concern, we've studied it for years and provided tons of data, you know, so we can...
Okay, just one...
Last question. So you said you've asked, you applied for an extension of your DEC permit to mine.
That makes sense, we're still staying in the 32.9 acres. What we're asking, we've already gone into the water table on half of it, we're asking to finish to the east for the lake.
Is that permit in any way dependent on you getting some kind of approval from the town to do a community solar project?
Well, that, that's in litigation right now. We take the position that it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, and that's what we've been operating under for years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can you send us links so we can learn more about the technology?
Kevin, are these mics? Kevin?
They've been very, making a lot of feedback.
Lots of feedback.
Those application packages that we sent into the town, can those be, I think we sent electronic version.
Yeah, I have, I have the application electronically, is that what you want?
I'd like to just learn more about the technology.
Oh, yeah, do you have links about the technology?
Yeah, it's in this report.
Oh, okay.
We've done all this, it's in the Met's report, if you read this, you'll learn everything about floating solar.
And other places where it's up and running?
So, Claire?
Yeah.
Farther along?
There's a, there's a eight to eight megawatt system, I think it is, in New Jersey. There's a two megawatt system being built up to Hudson by actually a municipality. They're, they're doing it for their own towns' purpose. And there's lots of them along across the United States.
And it's being looked at at reservoirs.
Long Island, did you say?
Not on Long Island, no.
Not over a groundwater aquifer?
How does eight megawatts compare to 7,300 kilowatts?
That's 7.3 megawatts?
That's 7.3 megawatts, yeah, so it's about the same size.
Trying to get my...
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I'm taking a math in a long time.
Yeah, I mean...
The action is that they've submitted a pre-submission conference application.
Is it complete?
Yes, because we just need plant, this is, you're seeing it for the first time.
Well, we're seeing it for the first time, man, I would, we would certainly...
We had one piece of paper.
We had one piece of paper.
We should probably do a...
We need a work session.
A work session.
Definitely.
I don't want to set a pre-submission contract.
What I'm going to do, because I'm not here the 11th of April. So, and I think next week's, the next meeting is going to be full too.
Full.
So we'll do the 25th as a work session during the day, and we can have the, the pre-submission conference at night. Does that make sense to you?
Well, I mean, there might be materials that we want that are, are absent in the pre-submission application, so why would we set something? This is like a whole new thing for us.
It's exciting and interesting.
Do the work session and then see how they feel about it after that.
Or do you want to set that pre-submission for the May, the May meeting?
As I said, they have an application, I just, you know, I process.
I know, but it, but it's important and it's environmental and it's...
I think this will be very sensitive, such...
Extremely, extremely.
Well, yeah, there's no doubt, and we have...
And there's litigation, overall litigation.
You're not in a super rush, you've got four years, right?
All right, so I mean, I would, let's have a work session and then go from there, only.
Okay, so no action today, work session on April 25th.
And we'll try and read some materials before then anything's...
Yeah, that would be, that would be great. I'd also encourage you to read, and we can get, you know, as I think about it, we should probably send in the studies that were performed for the mining permits, the hydro geo, and we'll bring our hydro geologists for the next meeting.
The work session. That's how that's...
Yeah.
We can give you, at the beginning, the...
And the work session will be first up.
Yeah, that's the first thing we need to do, we're not going to rush this.
No, 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 we understand that. And I've been working in the mining industry, sand and gravel, for 38 years now. And it is, it is the cleanest application you can get. I know the concerns with that.
Okay, we've had some bad experience here on the state of Long Island with sand and gravel, so let's not get you to go there.
I get it, I get it.
It's because people backfilled and things.
Yeah, and that's the, it's the, the excavation and the dredging piece is, it's tried and true, and it's been around for a very, very long time. And, and it, it creates actually habitat and change of habitat. There's so many places where it's accepted where, you know, the land is, you know, corn, Indiana, we do a lot of work in Indiana.
Okay, I have to wrap it up. Okay, thank you very much for waiting.
We have three minutes before our...
Environment and safety. Environment and safety.
Absolutely.
So, Claire, 19, you are...
That's, that is incomplete. You won't believe it, it's incomplete.
Mark from George, second by Gloria, all in favor? Price of extension, five in favor, two absent, incomplete.
I'm going to take off number 24, but we're going to talk about 21 just for two seconds.
Okay.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much.